Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, April 11th, 2006. We are here in City Hall, in our council chambers, named for past President John Ferraro, here in room 370 of City Hall. We invite members of the public to come to our meetings each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. They are always here in City Hall, except for the first Friday of the month, when we are in Van Nuys, at the Van Nuys City Hall. Members of the public can testify here at City Hall on general public comment, or on items that are before us, that are noticed for public comment. And also, people can go to Van Nuys City Hall, where we have a remote facility, and people can testify in Van Nuys, if that's closer to their homes, and we will hear them here. We're also being broadcast on Channel 35, L.A. City View, your channel, and we are rebroadcast in the evening. We are also webcast through the city's homepage at www.lacity.org, where there's a wealth of information about your city government, your elected officials, and the departments of the city of Los Angeles. We invite you to go there. If you don't have computer or television access, you can also listen to these meetings through council phone, which you can access at 213-621-CITY. And you can listen to the proceedings of the Los Angeles City Council, as well as our committees, as well. With that, I'd like to, please, call the roll, Madam Clerk. We only have nine members, so we're rating one more member, which would bring us to 10. We need two-thirds of our body to have a full quorum, so we want to thank council members Cardenas, Gruel, Labange, Perry. Thank you to council member Reyes, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, thank you, Mr. Smith, thank you, Mr. Zine, and myself, Mr. Garcetti, that's nine members. We are still awaiting one of the following members to come down, to make 10. So we'd like to ask council member Han, council member Weezer, council member Padilla, council member Parks, council member Weiss, and council member Wesson, to please come to the council chambers. As soon as we have 10 members, we will begin this meeting. It is now about 10:04. Thank you. Mr. Padilla is here, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and before, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Padilla moves, and Ms. Gruel seconds. If there's no objection, those are unanimously approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange is the mover, and Mr. Smith seconds. If there is no objection, those are also approved unanimously.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items on council's agenda, and also, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute.
That's what I thought. It is now time for our salute to the flag. If I can, please ask everybody in council chambers to please rise. And Ms. Gruel, if you would lead us in the flag salute.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. If everyone could please put their right hand over their heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. It is now time for public comment on items that are not on our agenda, but are under our jurisdiction. I'd like to invite members of the public to come forward for two minutes each, starting with Michael Palumbo, and to be followed by David Ewing, and Noel Weiss, and then Dr. Daniel Wiseman, in that order, please. Mr. Palumbo, first.
Mr. Garcetti, with your permission, if I could go first, and then Mr. Palumbo will go second.
Sure, no problem.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Honorable members of the council, and President, ladies and gentlemen, this is going to be a first in the history of the city council. We have renters presenting a development proposal to the city council, the first time in the history of the city council. As Mr. Rosendahl knows, Mr. Reyes knows, you kind of challenged us on Friday, Mr. Reyes, saying, "Okay, show us how it can be done." And right now, we're in a situation where we've got an approval for 850 units, and we're this close to 38 acres of vacant apartments, unless, basically, this thing moves forward. And Mr. Rosendahl is making efforts with his motion, and Mr. Rosendahl, again, for my money, I wish you'd do it sooner, but, you know what? Nobody elected me. It's you, you on the line, and I respect, you know, your judgment, and I'm hoping you're right, because if you are right, you're going to have that credibility. But I want to not take an undue amount of time. Everybody has a packet before them, which reflects this proposal, and it's for the construction of 850 units, consistent with what Mr. Reyes and Ms. Gruel offered the council back in 2002. So with that, I want to give my time to Mr. Palumbo.
Mr. Palumbo.
Good morning, President, and common council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a designer by trade. I work with all kinds of architects, from New York City through Montreal, and I decided to make a contribution for the upcoming mediation, which was show in-site plans and elevations how the 850 units would work at Lincoln Place. This embraces every single need. It embraces the tenants, it embraces affordable housing, it also embraces the community in terms of keeping the density low. 850 is the approved project, which you already approved. Also, it embraces the historic preservation. The rendering, which is the large panel here, emphasizes how the styling of the new buildings could reflect the old buildings. And we could preserve open space. It would be a win-win for everyone. It would be a win for the tenants, it'd be a win for the developer, and it would be a win for the community. We want to keep Venice Venice. That's really important to the grassroots Venice neighborhood council, it's important to all of us as tenants, and it's important to the preservation community as well. It's affordable housing, low-income housing. Aimco already wanted to do workforce housing, workforce housing can happen. So, as a designer, I had a challenge ahead of me, but I embraced it, and I ask you to please look at my presentation, look at the rendering, look at each site plan, which shows the distribution of 850 units that's built on the empty land. And we increased a couple of buildings to three stories. So, all that in mind, I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, and this is my contribution for the mediation coming up for Aimco. A win-win for everyone. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the testimony. Mr. Ewing, would you like to speak as well?
Council members, my name is David Ewing. I'm here representing the Venice Community Coalition. I live in Venice, at 1234 Preston Way. We are entering mediation, the community and the tenants, along with the council office, the mayor's office, the city attorney's office, the planning office, are all going into a mediation process on Lincoln Place. This is a difficult process to get moving. There are 25 participants with varying schedules. It's very delicate, it's very fragile. We hope that it works. These renderings show you what can be done, preserving all the existing buildings, and still getting the 850 units that the vesting tentative track map allows, which Aimco currently has. And thank you very much for looking at them.
Thank you, and thank you for those packets. We appreciate it. Dr. Daniel Wiseman is next, and then Michael Carrion, and Richard Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Daniel Wiseman of Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. As you saw, I got up and showed you some of the pictures that my colleagues from the West Valley, oh, from the West Los Angeles have come to. But I want you to be aware that this problem is not just a West Los Angeles problem. This is a problem all around the city. We have, in a council that I was formerly on the board, in Valley Village, on Magnolia Street, at Albert's, something that, if Mr. Weiss is here, or Ms. Gruel, they're aware that there is another property that is being treated in much the way as Lincoln Park, Lincoln Place. That these properties are important to us, because they are showing the way in which our city is being redeveloped, and we need to really reconsider it. Having said that, I'll spend my last minute of, first of all, thanking you and your council members from coming and visiting us in Van Nuys on Friday. It was a wonderful day for all of us, I think, and we greatly appreciate the efforts that it takes for you to do that. And we're going to try to make it well worth your while to consider the problems of the Valley, perhaps a little bit more directly because of that. Those activities are extremely important. And then I'd like to speak of the fact that I want all of our council members to be aware, and I'm going to look each of you in the eye to see if anybody's listening, to the fact that we have a change in our general manager of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. That general manager, Mr. Greg Nelson, did the yeoman task of getting us 85 of the potentially 100 neighborhood councils up and running. Now that they are up and running, now that the commission is about to be reviewing us to do what we can to improve it, and I thank Mr. Padilla for his leadership on that, the councils are in place and are ready to go forward in a much different way.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman.
I think we will be discussing this in the future, in greater detail.
Thank you.
About what this new general manager should be, what the new role of the general of the Department of Neighborhood Council will be, and what the neighborhood councils will do in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman.
Thank you for allowing me to run over my time.
No problem.
Yes, my name is Mr. My name is Mr. Carrion, and I'm here from 14th District, asking Mr. Weezer to find out, once and for all, what's going on in your office? I leave several messages, I don't get any messages back, Mr. Weezer. You speak of accountability. I've been here five times, telling you, your office is not accountable, yet you sat there and just looked at me and did nothing about it. I've got a quality of life issue in my community. I handed you a straw. Breathe through that straw for an hour, and see what my son feels like when his asthma kicks up, because you sit in that seat and you do nothing. Please, when you wanted that seat, you came to us and asked us to vote for you, you would do something. Until now, we have not seen you now, Serino. You do, just like the mayor does, you come around, take a few photo ops, and then we don't see you. I have a quality of life issue. Hillsides are coming down, illegal dumping has been done, and your office has done nothing. I have taken the initiative to do it all, and all I've asked for was a callback, and I don't even get that. We ask for accountability. Mr. Reyes, I spoke to you a few months ago about some graffiti in the park. You came up to me, said you were going to take care of it. This letter is stamped January 18th. Your office hasn't done anything about it. Where's the accountability here in this horseshoe? Mr. President, I seen you on TV today. You're all for the green lands, you're all for the food, but yet, when it came to the South Central farmers, everybody was tight-lipped. Nobody stood up for the South Central farmers, but when it's time to be, to look good on TV, you look sharp. You're saying how great you are for all these projects, except when they come out in front of you, nobody does nothing. I ask you once again, Mr. Weezer, this is your community. We didn't come to you and ask you to be our councilman, you came to us and asked us to put you in office. We put you in office. Please, do something about the quality of issue in our community. Don't worry about the mayor and his Board of Education issues, do something about our community first.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Our next speaker is Richard Robinson.
Yes, Mr. Weezer. Before you start, sir, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. I'll, sir, I'll go speak to you again, and I know my office, each time you've called, has returned your call. They tell me that each time you come here, and again, I'll go speak to you one more time. Thank you very much.
The council member's addressing you, if you'd like to listen. All right, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. President, members, Richard Robinson, neighborhood organizer. I reside in the Seven Star Motel, in room number 0104, in your honor's district. Sir, your honor, the immigration demonstrations that are bringing Esperanza to millions-seeking sanctuary remind me of the black civil rights demonstrations that occurred about a half century ago. I hope they succeed. There's a lady in New York Harbor, in her hand, there's a, pardon me for preaching, there's a torch of freedom. At the base of that statue is, there are words. Words or symbols? These symbols are dynamic. Send us your huddled masses, people yearning to be free. I'm part Cherokee, so I used to run around this neighborhood thousands of years ago. So, let's not forget that Dr. King, a half a century ago, was leading the way. What led to riots nationwide, and pardon me for preaching again, is a quest for freedom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes our general public comment for this meeting. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, Mr. Labange was going to do a quick introduction.
Introduction, members, you know the old axiom, there's 15 microphones, and we got them, but we can't do it without the people who run the sound. Very special today is the first time ever, Maria Martinez is here, running the sound, first woman ever in the city council, graduate of Wilson High School in Los Angeles, at East Los Angeles College. Maria, thank you for the beautiful sound. We can't do without the sound. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, and welcome to the council chambers. Madam Clerk, we can run through the next item of business.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there is a request to continue items 50 and 51 for six months, and the new date on that would be October 13th.
Okay, is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing items 50 and 51? If not, we will do so without objection. Okay, next items.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items 1 through 5 are street lighting ordinances.
Okay. Colleagues, anybody wishing to call those special? If not, please open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Next item's item 6, also a public hearing item, it's a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 9, and the action for council is to grant the application.
Okay, is there anybody wishing to be heard on that? If not, it's open and close the public hearing. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's open the roll on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 7 through 24, and on items 23 and 24, there are multiple reports on the file.
Okay, colleagues, any specials on these items? Mr. Cardenas?
Items 22 and 23.
Okay, 22 and 23, Mr. Cardenas. Any other specials? Mr. Zine? The same one? Mr. Weezer?
Number 12, please.
Number 12. Okay, any other specials, colleagues?
Mr. President, on item number 24, there are two reports on the file, and the recommendations differ. A motion is required.
Okay, what are those two reports from? Which committees?
Budget and Finance, and Energy and Environment and Personnel Committee, and also an ad hoc river report has been submitted.
Okay. Quite a few. Is there any motion to move any of those in particular? If not, let's, why don't we hold that on the table, and we'll, Mr.?
Budget and Finance Report.
Mr. Parks always likes the Budget and Finance Reports.
I don't know why I'm partial to that.
Okay, is there any objection to that? The reports are conflicting?
Yes, they are. The amounts of reserve and transfer are different.
Okay. It's just the amount of reserve and transfers. Anybody object to the Budget and Finance Report? If not, let's open the roll on the balance, including 24 with the Budget and Finance Report, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 25 through 51, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we do have a card on item 31, let's call that special. Any other specials, colleagues, 25 through 49? Seeing none, please prepare the roll on the balance, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
That would take council to, back to the items called special, and the first item called special was item number 12, and that was called special by council member Weezer, and an HCD report has been submitted and distributed to the council members.
Okay, before we take that up, I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes for an introduction or two. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. In a cultural exchange program, we have visitors from Tijuana and Mexico City, respectively. We have with us, licenciados Ernesto Gonzalez, licenciados Armando Lopez, bienvenidos to Los Angeles. Espero que la visita aqui en Los Angeles seria amable y ojalá que pasen buen dia. Muchas gracias por visitándonos.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Bienvenidos. With that, let's take up item number 12, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, council members. I bring this, call this item special to introduce a technical amendment that states, as a part of the state bond issuance, allow the city to impose affordability requirement beyond what may be required by the bond, as it is outlined in the current affordability level of Alexandria Hotel. This item is approving the sale of bonds for the renovations and support of the resurgence of the Alexandria Hotel, yet it is an area that is in need of renovations and revalidations. And what we've done here is strike a balance, I think, by the need to protect the entrance of the existing tenants, and at the same time, go forward and make much-needed repairs in that area, and I ask for your support on this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Ms. Perry?
Mr. President, and committee, I asked on the record for the Community Redevelopment Agency to come back to committee with the amount of subsidy or support needed for this project and the source, and I believe that's reflected in the record.
Thank you. Okay. What do we have before us, Madam Clerk? I'm sorry.
Item number 12, and then there is a technical amendment by Mr. Weezer.
Okay, and if that's accepted as friendly, if there's no objection to that, let's open the roll on item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay. Colleagues, just as a point of information, on our special agenda, both Chiefs Pamatre and also Chief Bratton will be coming here. We're going to try to aim for that at about 11 o'clock, just to let you know about that as well. So, Mr. Smith, did you?
Ask the number 16, go forthwith, please.
16, forthwith, for Mr. Smith, no problem. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 22, and that was called special by council member Cardenas.
Okay. As a point of information, there are two speaker cards on that, but we have held public comments, so that would require a motion. Mr. Cardenas.
Could we open up for public comment first?
Okay, is there any objection for these two speaker cards, colleagues? If there's no objection, let's do that. And Daniel Valao, and Patrick Owens. You both have two minutes to address the council. Welcome, and thank you.
Good morning, distinguished council members. My name is Daniel Viall, IBW Local 11. I represent your civil service employees. Those are the employees that work under your jurisdiction in the Civil Service Department. IBW Local 11 has appeared before the Personnel Board and the Budget Committees on this issue, discussing our position. We agree with the CAO's report that this item should remain in-house and performed by in-house city personnel. Part of the impact on this, as I reported, or as was reported by the Department of Transportation, to the Budget Committee and also to the Personnel Department, is that permanent positions are going to be created within the city, allowing city employees to perform these functions on a regular basis, on an ongoing basis. This builds in the maintenance function into the division itself. In the long term, what this means for us is we're creating more positions for the citizens of Los Angeles. It's our opportunity and our obligation to do that. Incidentally, above and beyond that, should this council decide to send this out to contract, we have MOU language, and MOU 2, our agreement with the city, that circumvents this or prevents that. In essence, jobs, as reported by the Department of Transportation, would not be created should this item go to contract. And we have specific contractual language that obligates the city to not do that, and I would have no recourse but to pursue a remedy for my membership. The things that we do in my office is create opportunities for our members, and that includes this young lady back here in the corner, running your sound today. IBW Locals perform duties within the jurisdiction of this council and in this city. She's a member of Local 45, and we're very proud to represent your employees. If you have any questions or anything, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Patrick Owens is next.
Good morning, council members. Mr. President, I also represent IBW Local 11, Los Angeles, through the Business Manager's Office, Marvin Kropke, and we urge that item 22 takes on a affirmation by the council this morning, and the work is as well kept in-house, being done by the civil service workforce, our members, your employees. This item has been through all the committees. As of late, the last two committees have given it confirmation to keep it in-house. The end result for IBW Local 11 is, as Daniel had previously stated, we would retain five years' worth of work for our existing members, your employees, who are comfortable in what they're doing day-to-day as it is, they are familiar, you know, in their projects or in their jobs, as they are the city of L.A. employees. And so, we would like to see this item take on a concurrence by the council this morning and end the matter. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
Could we have item 22 and 23 to hear them concurrently? Mr. President, can we hear items 22 and 23 concurrently?
Let's hold those together, if there's no objection to that, sure. Would you like to start the conversation? Mr. Cardenas still on the turn?
Is there any more speaker cards?
Mr. Smith, oh, no, there's no more speaker cards, but Mr. Smith is on, next on the queue.
I think somebody just submitted another one, they just signaled.
Oh, we just got them here, okay. Oh, no, these are different ones. Item 23, if Wade White would like to come forward for two minutes.
Good morning, council members. My name is Wade White, I'm the president of Republic Electric. As most of you know, Republic Electric was selected by the DOT as the most qualified respondent to the RFP for the LED project. Briefly, we recently submitted a California Public Records Act request, actually two of them, for DOT to produce the documents, so that we could see if the incandescent lamps that they have stockpiled are legal lamps. And to date, we have not received the most basic information, which is invoices and packing slips, so that we can see when the lamps were manufactured. As most of you know, the LED project cannot go forward on a five-year program if there's not enough incandescent lamps. Secondly, we've also, we are also a Local 11 contractor, the gentleman that just spoke here a minute ago, so they would be the same employees. And we've also presented a proposal to the mayor and several council members, that we would be willing to employ the same people that they are employing, city employees, and then at the end of the two years, return them back to the city. This is a very important project for the city to be able to complete in two years, not five years, to both come in compliance with the CEC requirements, and also the millions of dollars in energy savings that are left on the table here, if the project is not done in two. This was heard last summer in three different committees, it was voted unanimously to go forward that way, and recently, it's obviously changed, and, you know, we believe that is because of the personnel issues, which we've put forth to the council, to, that we feel is a win-win to go that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes public comment. We had Mr. Smith on the queue, who I think has disappeared. Mr. Cardenas, do you want to take up? Okay, Mr. Cardenas, and then Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Unfortunately--
Unfortunately, this proposal and effort has been rolling around the City of Los Angeles for a long, long time. Actually, the impetus for converting our light signals in the City of Los Angeles to LED lights, which are much more efficient, came about by legislation in the state of California requiring that all of the municipalities, all of the cities and counties that have these jurisdictions, change those to the much more efficient LED lights. Fortunately, the technology is there, the ability to do so is there, but the -- it seems like the will of the City of Los Angeles is to just roll around on this until finally, out of frustration, we just make a decision. I want to make something very clear. I'm moved by the statement that was made by the representative of Local 11 that we should not contract out unless there is sufficient evidence that that would be in the best interest of the constituents of Los Angeles, the taxpayers. But in this particular case, what I see before me is a very confusing, conflicting analysis from our CLAs, our CAOs, Department of Transportation, statements that were made when I was the chairman of the Committee, Energy and Commerce Committee, where people kind of went back and forth, and at one time, it seemed like the staff was strongly in favor, that there was justification that a shorter two- or three-year model would benefit the people of Los Angeles in all respects. And then, all of a sudden, we get a letter from the mayor's office on January 17, 2006, saying that the best and most prudent thing to do is to go with a five-year model and do it in-house. Yet, at the same time, when the mayor was then chairman of the Transportation Committee, he seemed to be of the opinion, and the reports reflect, that a shorter model and to contract it out and to follow through with the RFP that the city put forth would be the most prudent and effective and most costly -- cost-efficient manner to go through. I'm saying this on the public record because I think it's important for the people of Los Angeles to understand that our responsibility is to adhere to our charter, our responsibility is to respect the employees of the City of Los Angeles, because there are protections for them, yet at the same time, our ultimate responsibility overall, interlinked with all of those matters, is to make sure that we do it in an efficient and appropriate and legal fashion. One of the things that was brought to my attention right now and was said on public record, that Republic Electric said that they've asked the Department of Transportation to give them copies of the receipts of the bulbs that were purchased. Now, you're probably wondering, what does that have to do with anything? Well, the state of California said, you need to get with the program, and this was many years ago, and they said, do not -- you cannot go around buying the old-fashioned bulbs. You cannot put this off by going and traversing the country or the world and then buying as many -- stockpiling as many bulbs so you can sit on your old-fashioned wasteful energy bulbs for years and years and years to come. So with that, if you'll hold my time, Mr. President, I'd like to have somebody from the Department of Transportation to come and mention whether or not they're going to satisfy that request.
Your time is actually expired, but we can answer that question, and then if you'll press your button again.
On their time?
Okay, all right. Go ahead. If we -- the general manager is here. Actually, my apologies, Mr. Cardenas is the first speaker. You'll have six minutes, so you have three more minutes.
Okay, so my time is not expired. Thank you.
Good morning, members of council.
This has been floating around a lot longer than you've been here.
That is indeed true. The quick response is, yes, we have that information for you here and now.
Oh, good.
Indeed, we have them. They are consistent with both the federal and state requirement for the manufacture of those bulbs that have taken place before March of the year 2003.
Is it manufactured or purchased by the municipality?
Manufactured.
The requirement is manufactured.
The state requirement? Is manufactured.
Okay, so basically, if we scour the earth and find bulbs that are born on date of those bulbs prior to a certain date, we can go ahead and purchase them into perpetuity as long as those exist in some warehouse somewhere?
That was what the statute allows. That is not our intent, but that is what the statute allows.
Hmm, that is not our intent, but what has been our practice?
Our practice is to acquire the necessary equipment to meet the needs of our system as well as to be a part of the mayor's overall fiduciary responsibility to the citizens and businesses of the City of Los Angeles.
Now, when you say that your responsibility, fiduciary and otherwise, to make sure that we have the necessary equipment, how many years of those bulbs do we have in possession today, conceivably based on the error rates and the replacement rates of those bulbs?
At the moment, it is my understanding that we have sufficient supply to do a complete replacement of all of the signals within the City of Los Angeles.
I don't understand the answer to that question. I'm talking about the old-fashioned bulbs, not the LED bulbs. I'm talking about the old-fashioned bulbs that we've stockpiled in the City of Los Angeles. Apparently, according to your statement, we're now adhering to federal and state requirements that they have a manufactured date of X or before. How many years forward do we have in stock of those items?
We have -- we currently have available sufficient numbers of the bulbs that are necessary to provide compliance with the -- not only manufactured by date, but to provide sufficient lighting to be easily seen by motorists and by large vehicle operators so that they may
Okay.
safely operate within our system to replace every single light signal within the City of Los Angeles that requires it in place today.
Okay, then I need to be more specific. How many bulbs do we have?
Exactly, what's the exact number?
What we have in our possession right now is 135,000, and those are all manufactured before 2003. And I just want to address a little bit about what comment Mr. Wade made. We did receive the letter from the attorney about getting all the information together. I myself personally worked with the General Services Section Department and their city attorney. We compiled all the paperwork together, invoices, the paperwork from, the manufacturer showing when they were made, the purchase order number, the quantity, and we submitted all of these to our city attorney, and the city attorney did forward it to their attorney, and I did get a call back from their attorney's office saying that they had received all of the paperwork.
That's wonderful. When did you get a call back from their attorney?
We received a call back. I have it -- it was the week after it was due.
What was the date?
So, I don't have the date off my head. I would have to look up of my --
Okay, I'd like to give you that date because we have on public record somebody who's saying that their attorney has not informed them, and this particular organization is just not some erroneous organization. They've gone through a bid process. They want to make sure that everything's on the up and up, and everything's being handled appropriately. So it's very critical that we get that information verified.
Councilmember, while we don't have the precise date at this moment, it's my understanding it was March of 2006.
Yeah, well, there's 31 days in March, and at this particular time, an actual date is critical.
We will provide that.
I appreciate your willingness to speak on the record and to try to clarify, but I'd like some more specific answers. Now, we have 135,000 bulbs. That sounds very impressive. How many intersections, how many lights do we actually have in operation in the City of Los Angeles today that potentially could utilize that bulb in case it goes out?
We have 180,000 light points throughout the City of Los Angeles. We have 135,000 bulbs in stock, and we have a contract with a contractor who changes out our bulbs. He has 90,000 in stock, all manufactured, according to him in writing, before 2003. All those bulbs together are sufficient to see us through a five-year conversion period if that is the will of the council.
Thank you. That contractor, I'm supposed to interpret that that contractor, that third-party contractor has 90,000 bulbs dedicated solely and specifically for the use of the City of Los Angeles?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So we have 135,000 plus 90,000. We have 120 -- 225,000 potential bulbs available to us. There's 180,000 bulbs in the city blinking and going on and off at this time in the City of Los Angeles. What is the error rate or the replacement rate of those bulbs per thousand, per month?
We replace 90,000 bulbs a year, but given that we will be both -- if we have a five-year program, that we will be replacing those bulbs at a decreasing rate as we convert other locations over to LEDs. So the amount that we would need without an LED program over five years would be 450,000. Because we will be replacing bulbs with LED modules, we would need half that amount, or 225,000. That is the total of the 135,000 we have in stock plus the 90,000 that our contractor has.
So you're claiming that 90,000 replacement a year, and that they're going to be graduated down to where we will not need more than 225,000 bulbs during a five-year period?
That is correct.
Do you have a written analysis on how that scale, how that sliding scale moves down?
We do.
Yeah, if you could submit that for my colleagues and myself at this time, because this is the time and place that we're debating this, we could make a final decision, potentially a final decision today. So that information is pretty much useless for the policymakers after today. It now goes back into your lap in making sure that you implement properly and appropriately. So if you could pass that out, I'd appreciate it, yes.
If I can ask this, your last question, this is six minutes expired with your time held.
Oh, it did? Okay, you weren't holding my time when they were talking?
I was, I was holding it.
Oh, you were?
Yep.
Wow, time flies. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Next is Mr. Smith, then Mr. Zine, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Cardenas again.
Thank you. Ms. Jeff, you've stated that you believe that the bulbs we're buying meet the letter of the law.
Yes.
Do you think it meets the spirit of the law?
Yes, it does.
How do you say it meets the spirit of the law if we're taking five years to do a program that could be done in two years, and in that five years, we're putting inferior bulbs in that do not meet the new state code, but we're getting by just because of a technicality?
Well, a couple of things. One, it does comply not only with the law in terms of being manufactured before March of 2003, but it also meets the requirements in terms of the actual functioning of those. What we are doing over that five-year period is transitioning between equipment -- between equipment to the LEDs.
I'm on my time.
And so, in that context, we not only are meeting the spirit and the intent of the law with respect to the actual bulbs that we're using, but also the spirit in terms of providing equipment that is more contemporary, for lack of a better term.
But we're taking three years longer to do it. We're already out of compliance, aren't we not?
We are not out of compliance, the existing, in terms of the lighting requirements associated with it, we will be complying with. In terms of transitioning to the LEDs, we'll be doing that. In addition to whether or not the equipment works, there's one other thing, Mr. Smith, and that has to do with what can the city afford to do at this time? If what we are attempting to do here is rather than come back to the council and ask for almost five times more dollars to do this one particular project, we are attempting to live within the dollars that we have available, as explained as by both the CLA's office and the CAO's office.
Well, first of all, it's not five times more. It's a -- Mr. Fujioka, what were the numbers? The difference between the Republic proposal and the five-year plan that DOT is going to do was a couple million dollars difference?
Well, actually, it's a difference between $4 million on an annual basis to $11 million. So it'd be a $7 million difference. I wanted to interject at this point in time, like, given that what Ms. Jeff has stated that it does -- it does -- we are in current compliance with the intent and the spirit of the state law. The additional $7 million would have to be identified, and the other concern is that we go into a two-year cycle, well, a two-year replacement program, you're going to see, instead of a -- you can see a peak and valley, you see spikes in the replacement cycle. And so that every five years, given the life of these LEDs, you're going to have to see -- you see another spike or another increase of that $11 million on an annual basis to replace these bulbs, whereas over a five-year period, we can build it into the work plan at DOT and handle it, in my opinion, in a more fiscally responsible manner. We have sent the proposed budget to the print shop already. Given that we're -- we've met both the spirit and the intent of the state law, and given competing demands on the city's budget, if we were to go with a two-year plan at this juncture, when we'd go into the ad hoc budget committee in a few weeks, we'd be forced to identify that additional $7 million.
Mr. Fujioka, you were in committee when the company said, we'll amortize that out for five years for you and carry that with no interest. They offered that in committee, so the cost factor for this year's budget remains constant, whichever way we do it.
I know. On that particular note, I'd be concerned about whether or not it met our bid requirements because I'm not sure if other people, given that opportunity, to offer a financial structure of that type. So we'd have to hear from our legal counsel on that.
Well, let's ask the city attorney that. If it's structuring out or the same timeframe with no carrying costs, why should it matter to us from that point of view? It shouldn't.
Understand.
Yeah, I want to know, let's have the -- city attorney, please.
Good morning, councilmember. Shelley Smith in the city attorney's office. This is a matter that we did express concern at, at the Transportation Committee as well as the Budget and Finance Committee. We would be concerned that unsuccessful respondents to the RFI or the RFP, had they known that they could have offered an amortization at no interest, which would significantly, again, lower costs for them, we have a concern that they might have a claim that the contracting process did not create an even playing field.
First of all, it doesn't reduce their costs. It adds costs because they're paying the carrying cost of that money. So they're not adding, reducing costs in doing this. They're adding costs voluntarily to their side of the equation, so there's no financial benefit for anybody who didn't win the bid. There's a financial disincentive, actually. But this doesn't constitute a bid enhancement because we're requesting it of the bid recipient. They qualified, they met the criteria, and we're then saying to them, would you carry this for us? That's not bid enhancement. That's a request from us to do something on our behalf. That's not bid enhancement.
I understand, but that offer, that possibility, was not extended to others, including primes and subs.
Okay. I do not agree with that opinion. I can't imagine that constitutes a bid enhancement, nor would anybody sue us because they didn't have a chance to finance our debt for five years. That's not normal business practice. I, you know, maybe you and everyone in the private sector, I was. To me, if the business opportunity came up and they said, by the way, would you like to spend some more of your money to have our business, I'd really think about that before I sued, quite frankly. I do not consider that bid enhancement. Ladies and gentlemen, I, you know, I think the issue comes down to two things. First of all, the issue of the unionization. This contractor, Republic, is a union shop. They buy -- they hire IBW employees. It's a different local, it's the issue. So don't be fooled by the issue of unionization of the shop. This is not a union issue. Secondly, as we heard in committee over and again, this contractor will carry the cost out for us to do it in two years rather than five. We don't put the city employees on and have a structural deficit issue, which we've all been talking about consistently. We don't put people on that now over five years, we're going to have to keep busy. I am not concerned about the spike issue because these things have been out in the marketplace for over six years and haven't hit that five-year recycling -- excuse me, the five-year replacement cycle yet even. And so, we don't know even how long they'll last. They're already over the five years in the marketplace. I think we'll see that they're going to spread out over many years. It's not going to happen all at once. They don't automatically go out on the fifth year like a car when you buy it. These things are lasting longer in the marketplace. I don't think that's an issue. I think we should take the option because we need to be complying with the state law. It was passed in the year 2000, and here we are in 2006, still debating about keeping the old bulbs in our lights instead of replacing with a new technology, which we could do in two years with this contract right now, instead of spreading out for five years and trying to get technically around the law by complying with the letter of the law but not the spirit of the law. The spirit of the law was to get new bulbs, brighter bulbs, energy-efficient bulbs, and we're saying, let's find a way to spread this out over five years so we can hire more employees, when we can do it cheaper, right now, better. And that's what the real fight's all about.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Zine, followed by Ms. Gruel, followed by Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Parks, Mr. Cardenas.
Mr. Smith, I commend you on your research on this. I've never seen you so passionate about something. You're obviously
Trash! Whatever you
Well, trash, okay. I'm sorry, the bulbs are going to go in the trash can anyway, so that'll make that. I have a question for the city attorney. I understand there was a request for documents, and I heard during the previous discussion before you got to the table that the documents were produced. I heard earlier before we started council that they were still waiting for the documents. Can you clarify if the freedom of information, that was done or not?
As far as I know, the documents that were requested under the California Public Records Act were provided. Now, of course, I'm speaking for my client, the Department of Transportation. We did also direct the attorneys to the Department of General Services, but I was informed by their general counsel that the department would and was producing the documents.
And that's something regarding the date when they were either manufactured or purchased, and they were waiting for that?
I understand that they were the purchase orders and procurement documents.
And those were turned over to Republic?
As far as I know, they were. I know they were for the Department of Transportation.
And the issue of this replacement, as Mr. Smith said, has been going on for six years. March is a critical date when either the purchase or complying with the state regulation, can you make certain that the hundred-and-some-thousand that we have that are stockpiled waiting for replacement all comply waiting for replacement all comply with the existing state law? That they were either purchased or the requisition, or whatever the case, on the technical date? And I think it was March 2000 and...
March 2003.
And three?
We have provided that information. I believe that that is also being provided to the members of council as we speak.
So we are in compliance with the state law?
Yes.
Regarding what we have stockpiled for the replacement that may take place in the next few years?
Yes.
And the recommendation for you as a general manager from Department of Transportation?
The recommendation from me as a general manager of Department of Transportation is that we go with the five-year replacement cycle. What needs to be clear, and I think it's been a little bit muddied here, is that what we will do over the five-year period is convert to the LEDs. It is not that for the next five years, we will simply take the old bulbs and put in new ones. Our intent is to convert to LEDs. It is a question of, do we do it in a two-year period or a five-year period? We will do it over five years, is my recommendation.
And the cost factor, Mr. Fujioka, over the five-year versus the shorter term? We're going to save money, we're going to spend more money?
On a short-term basis, the, you know, the basic difference is, it's $11 million a year. Under the two-year plan, it'd be $4 million a year, spread out over that five-year period.
So if we go with the Department of Transportation's recommendation, we're going to save money?
Yes, you would save money. Even with the loan offered by the company, it would still cost an additional $1.6 million to the city.
That's interest?
No, I'm just saying, just the straight cost, it'd be $1.6 million.
So what the general manager is saying, the newly confirmed general manager, is you recommending the five-year with the city employees and the Department of Transportation, and in that term, that will save us money in that replacement program. And again, it's not just taking a bulb out and putting another bulb in. There's a conversion that has to take with the 4,000 or something, the traffic signals that we have. Mr. Fisher, can you give me the number, how many we have in the city of L.A.?
The number of light points is 180,000. Number of signaled intersections is 4,300.
4,300 signal intersections, but then each intersection has the multiples on all four corners, et cetera.
If I can ask you to conclude after this, Mr. Zein?
There's approximately 42 light points per intersection.
Per intersection.
Right.
I can ask you to conclude.
Are you shutting me down?
You're forty...
Turning on my red light?
Second's over.
I'm done, thank you, thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll make sure it's union work shutting you down. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. A quick question. When did we go out to bid on this?
In September 2004.
Okay. So, and the recommendation came back from the department, when? After the bid?
In January 2005.
Okay. And so we've been talking about this, I think, as Mr. Cardenas said and others. We've been talking about this for over a year. My committees have all changed, and I still get to hear it in all of my committees. It was in personnel at the time, and transportation, and budget, and finance, and I'm certain it probably went to one or two other committees. And, Bill, I'm very interested, because you said this, if we go with the private, it'd be $1.6 million more, even with the offer, which may or may not be a bid enhancement?
Yes.
Okay. And that's based, I'm not sure I heard the answer to the, what is that based on? I mean, what is the, why does it cost more? And hold my time, please.
Where, take my seat. Trainons, at our office of the CAO. It's because the city has negotiated a lower cost for the bulbs that it can purchase through its city contracts.
LEDs?
Right, LEDs. And that recently reduced the cost to 20.2, I believe, for the city to be able to do that.
Okay. One other question. When the department went out to bid, did they anticipate that they would actually end up being the entity to perform these responsibilities and duties?
It is my understanding, councilmember, that at the time that the request for proposal, the RFP was issued, it was to get a handle on what the real range of costs were, because apparently, they were being told at the time in 2004, anywhere between $4 million and 20-plus million dollars was a potential range. As part of the RFP, it clearly articulated that there was no guarantee of an award on the part of the city as a result of the RFP.
And when did the CAO review, CAO or CLA do the charter section review, which I always forget the number, which is?
10/22.
10/22?
Are we talking about on the five-year program?
In the program at all.
Okay. For the two-year program, I think that was fairly recent. We were able to make a determination that, in fact, it would be more feasible to go with the two-year program, mainly because of the logistics of hiring on 17 additional staff, and to do it so quickly, so that the department would be able to perform the program within two years. In a case with a five-year program, since we've been able to demonstrate that there's actual cost savings to be able to use city employees over the five-year term, we cannot make a 10/22 determination in that case, because that would require that. The contractor would either need to be more feasible or more cost-effective. They're not more cost-effective, and we don't believe that it's more feasible, because city employees have been shown to be able to do the work.
There was one option that was proposed earlier, which was borrowing the money from DWP as far as utilizing that, whether we went for Republic Electric or city employees.
That's correct.
And what happened with that? Hold my time.
Well, I believe what happened with that is, once Republic Electric proposed the possibility of financing over five years, that no longer became an issue. However, that DWP loan would be available. If we were to perform the conversion using city forces over five years, we would not need to be taking out a loan, because we've already got that factored into the five-year forecast for the city's budget.
I'm sorry, you're saying the loan is feasible from DWP, but it would have interest attached to it? We were hoping to get the loan out?
Oh, yes. There would be interest of approximately $3.2 million if we were to use that option.
Okay. Colleagues, this has been, as you've heard from several of us, I think we have really bad examples of how the city operates this, probably, and I've said this to the department personally, is one of the worst examples. And I, you know, I want to acknowledge Wade, who has been pretty amazing through this process. I would have given up a long time ago, Wade, but you have, you know, pursued this, because, again, it has taken so long. The numbers have changed. Again, we see again today that we've been able to negotiate better deals on the lights, and we've gone through the process. I voted in the first committee, and I think it was Personnel Committee, I can't remember, I think it was Personnel Committee, that to go with Republic Electric, because at that time, that was something I believed that we could do cheaper, faster, better, and did not believe we had gone through the right process. This has been a messed-up process. It probably deserves even stronger language than that, because we're sending a very bad message to the business community, that we're going to get your information, we're going to hold you for two years, almost, and make a decision, and we have our own bid enhancement, because we get new information every single day. And so I think that is a problem. All that being said, in Budget Committee, I supported going within the city because of the financial aspects and the replacement aspects of this, that we have to, you know, it was every five years or six years, or whatever it may be, we're going to have to have that replacement. One last que, oh, my, I'll push my button again, I'll ask a question, okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Rosendahl's our next speaker, and then Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have Republic Electric, please, come up as well to the stand and hold my time? Just leave a few of you here, like you, Gloria.
Do you want them, they can come to the podium if you want, or?
I'd rather they sit at the table. Give them a little. No, no, stay where you are, then. Stay over there, okay. Morning. You've heard the discussion here.
Yes.
React to it.
How much time do I have?
Just go for it.
The numbers are moving numbers. We've, over and over again, through these committees over the last year and a half, have submitted white papers on specific things that keep being brought up. With regard to the CAPRA, the California Public Records Act request, we have not received invoices or packing slips. We got purchase orders. We did not, we have no way of being able to track these lamps.
Explain that, in other words, you, through the Freedom of Information Act, wanted to know about these bulbs?
Where they got them, because in Councilman Cardenas's committee, on May 24, '05, John Fisher said that in order to do this project, they would have to use LED, illegal lamps. And we, John, I'm sorry, we got the tapes and did the transcripts on it. So we just want to see the invoices and the packing slips, so we can see where they got the lamps. There's numerous letters from the California Energy Commission stating way back in 2004 that they scoured the state looking for lamps and offered, showed the city where they could buy some of the lamps, and there was only 7,000 or 8,000 that they ended up buying. They didn't think back in 2004 that they had enough. And so if they didn't have all legal lamps in May of 2005, I don't know how they could possibly have those today. But if that's the case, then we just need to see the invoices, the packing slips, go check with the manufacturers, with the serial numbers, and see if they're there. But with regard to the dollars, the one thing that's always missing in this whole process is millions of dollars in energy savings. We've done about 100 of these projects around the country, and I've never had a situation where a city ignores the energy savings. That's always the driving factor in an LED retrofit, and that's not part of this.
Is Bill Fujioka still here? Could he please come up and address that particular question right now? Hold my time. Bill, he said millions of dollars can be saved if we did it in two years rather than five years, and he doesn't understand why we don't address that. Help me on that.
This gentleman is saying millions of dollars could be saved? Did he, did he qual, did he state how that would be achieved? I didn't hear, I was talking to someone else.
He said that in two years versus five years. The next three years, we have...
The straight dollar amount. If it's done in two years, it's about $22 million to install all the LEDs. The one-year cost over a five-year period is about $4 million.
Hold my time.
You know, so if we're talking solely about the difference in what it would cost to install the LEDs over a two-year versus a five-year period?
No, I'm not talking about install. I'm talking about energy savings in the year three, four, and five.
About the energy savings. So the, now the difference in the energy savings over the five-year period is $3.3 million.
No, we'd save $3 million if we did it in two years rather than five.
Over that five-year period.
Wait a minute.
Counselman?
What are you saying?
Speak up, speak up, John.
Go ahead.
Wait, wait, John's going to...
I would like to add that there is indeed a $3.3 million savings that DWP would save and would pass on to their ratepayers. However, it would not defray the cost to the general fund to finance this program.
Okay, but we do save $3 million.
Yes.
It's a transfer that would go to the general treasury anyhow.
That's the additional savings that would occur, that would be realized by the DWP, that they would pass along to their ratepayers, but it would not offset the cost of this program to the city.
I understand, sure, sure.
And the savings would not go to the city of Los Angeles.
That's true.
It would go to the ratepayers.
I know, but we get a transfer from DWP every year. That's why we are able to make our balance budget, thanks to DWP's transferring money to us. I mean, that's an indirect play.
DWP said that the savings was 4.5 megawatts a year. So that would, and I believe at the last Budget Committee...
That's not the information provided to us by DWP. There is no question...
That's what they stated.
There's no question whatsoever that if we do it quicker, there would be some energy savings, and the savings would be, would be realized by the ratepayers, who are, yes, they are the city of Los Angeles. There's no question whatsoever. There is, the issue on the table now is the cost difference for achieving the two-year installation versus the five-year installation. What we have before you is a difference of $7 million. The $7 million today, I had mentioned earlier, if you do go forward with the two-year plan, and it does become that policy issue, and I recognize a policy issue, but if you do go forth with the two-year plan, when we go forward and discuss the budget for fiscal year 2006, 2007, will we put in a position where we'll have to identify how to fund that difference? I understand this loan the company has offered. I can't speak to the legal issues. We had the city attorney come forward, expressing her concern that the loan may constitute a bid enhancement. It may subject us or expose us to a legal claim from the other bidders. That's something we'll put on the legal side of this ledger. But the bottom line is, the difference next year, if the loan is not legal, if it does constitute a bid enhancement, and we're forced to pay it out over a two-year period, will mean we have to find an additional $7 million to pay for this. But then, but then, I can hear the arguments that, because of the energy conservation, I understand that. There is a cost consequence to that, though, and that, and that, that cost consequence will be, we'll have to deal with during the budget process, because today, we, I'm telling you, we'd have to find that money. In an ongoing basis, because if you do it in two years, if you smooth it out over five years, you can have a constant replacement cycle, that's part of the work plan for DOT. If you do it in two years, I'm going to tell you, five, six years from now, you're going to have another spike, and that $22 million, $23, $24, $25 million will have to be, have to be found again to do it again. And this, I doubt if we'll have an interest-free loan at that point in time. Today, they have it, because this company is desperate to get this contract, and came up with this 11th-hour proposal that was not part of the original proposal, not part of the original bid.
Okay, thank you. Could you just react to that, and then I have a couple more questions for the table here.
Sure. Just to be real clear, the additional cost would simply be to the taxpayers, not to the city, because the difference we're talking about in the $4 million to $11 million is just the difference in doing it in each individual year. So if you're doing it in two years, you've got to pay for the project in two years. If you're going to do it in five years, you pay over five years. So there's no difference in price. It's just how you're getting the money. When we offered, and I would hardly say after 18 months, it was the 11th hour that we were doing this, that we offered the financing, but when you include the financing, there is no difference in cost. In fact, it's quite a savings to the city. And as far as the lawsuit is concerned, we have a legal opinion on that, that this is not bid enhancement, and my attorney, Jerry Newman, just stepped up here to tell me that we would gladly indemnify the city on that as well.
You know what's unfortunate? I think we should look at the merits. We need to look at, one, the legal aspects of whether or not we can, we can accept this no-cost bid. I understand the comments we're going to hear shortly about the benefit it has to the people, you know, the citizens of the city of L.A. I mentioned the cost consequences, but when a person comes up and says there's no difference in cost, when, in a factual context, there's an absolute difference in cost, I have a problem with that. We did negotiate a much cheaper price for the LEDs itself, for the bulbs, that is cheaper than what this company is willing to offer. If you do decide to go with this two-year plan, then this company, if he says there's no difference in cost, you should hold him to that. And he should, he should offer us the equipment, the LEDs for the same price we just negotiated. And maybe they can put their money where their mouth is.
Gloria, are you 100% certain you have those bulbs, even though he's saying there's no invoices or packing slips or anything else?
He has been provided with that information, so there is that information available, and I have confidence in the members of the Los Angeles Department of Transportation. I don't believe that they have misspoken on this issue.
Tell me, are we looking at a story of seven more employees for perpetuity, so to speak, and have we added up those costs versus a two-year vendor doing it?
We would, one, be assigning our most experienced individuals to perform this work, and, secondly, we would be providing individuals to do additional work, and based on my rounds of meetings with all the members of council. Those no, there's no lack of additional work that you would like to see from members of our staff, and these individuals could perform that work. So I see that while we'd have additional personnel, it would not simply be to do the conversion, but to meet the numerous needs of the members of the city council.
Oh, that's a new idea for a hiring scheme. In other words, we need more personnel to do our basic job. I got to tell you, in my district, my people are frustrated with the left-hand turn signals not in time and all these other things, and it's always because we have a backlog and we're behind. we're behind. So these seven employees would have other responsibilities over time to assist us in other issues.
That is correct.
Well, that's a new dimension that I hadn't heard of before we started this discussion. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Our next speaker is Mr. Parks, to be followed by Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Gruel, and Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to refresh my memory. It seems like we've gone through this before. But Sharon, you came to Budget and Finance, and you crunched the numbers for us. Could you go over those again? Because if I remember correctly, they were almost identical with the few dollars one side or the other.
If I can just go back a little bit into history.
Could you hold my time?
This item has been before various council committees over the course of the past 18 months, and I would like to say that in terms of the staff recommendations, the staff recommendations have been consistent, and that was to go with a five-year city forces to do the LED replacement, and this is going back to January of 2005. With regard to our involvement, Budget and Finance Committee asked us to look at the proposal in August of last year. We did crunch the numbers, and in November, we presented a joint CAO/CLA report, which indicated that when you take all of these things into account, the energy savings, and you take into the count of the five-year program, et cetera, that the cost, it was cheaper to go with the five-year city forces, primarily because there was going to be... To do it with a two-year with a contract, it was going to require us to take out some loans, either through water and power or some other way, but it was going to cost us some financing charges. Then, when the item was heard again in Budget and Finance Committee in November, it was then when the contractor put forward this idea of allowing us to pay over five years. And it was at that time when I came before your committee and said that with regard to the cost, taking that into account, it was fairly close. But it's not just about the cost that goes into the decision-making. It also relates to the operation of how DOT would do this, that it would have a predictable workload. It does eliminate the peaks and valleys of if we do a two-year replacement, whether the bulbs last five years or six years. In five years, six years, we're going to be going through a two-year replacement again. And so that was part of the reason why, operationally, it was our recommendation to go forward with a five-year replacement. This is also about control of the project. If you retain it in-house and you do it with your DOT forces, in five, six years' time, with changes in technology, you might want to go out to contract later at that time, but you preserve your ability to look at that. If you start with a contract now, it's going to make it much more difficult for you to change to city forces in five or six years' time. Also, with regard to the city budgetary impact, you know, if we budget $4 or $5 million, it's predictable. We know what to expect. By doing something different and having these peaks and valleys, then every five to six years, you're going to have a peak in your budget as well. So it was a variety of factors that went into this recommendation.
On the issue of the ongoing maintenance, maybe you or Ms. Jeff can comment on... I understood the proposal going outside did not have an ongoing maintenance. So once they were installed, we'd have to hire people to put them on the payroll to then turn these things out every two to five years. Is that accurate?
That is correct, that once the initial installation took place, the contractor's activities would be completed, and that the city would have... The Department of Transportation on behalf of the city would have responsibility for the ongoing maintenance.
And then also, it was my understanding that the people we're talking about hiring now, once they did the installation, would be the carryover for ongoing maintenance as long as we'd like them to do it?
Exactly.
Okay. The other issue, and maybe the city attorney can... We can put her to work again. Two things I'd like to see if you could clarify for me is the issue of the charter requirement as it relates to when the city feels comfortable to go outside, and the other one is, I think you commented earlier, but just to clarify it again on this issue of bid enhancement.
As to the Charter Section 1022 determination, which I think Councilman Parks is what you're inquiring about, when the project was first formulated and the department prepared the procurement documents, they were considering whether or not to change everything out within a two-year period of time. So the analysis that would have been done by the city looked at that two-year period of time. In a two-year period of time, there were real issues of feasibility in terms of using city forces. So as the CAO representative has indicated, Ms. Unziger, a 1022 determination was, in fact, made and able to be made. Because we do have enough compliant materiel, according to the department, to phase in this project over a five-year period of time, looking at over a five-year period of time, the 1022 determination clearly goes with staying in-house, and it is both feasible and cost-effective to remain within the city. So I think the question arose because the project was conceived of differently in time, between two and five years. And as to the bid enhancement issue, I don't know that I can add anything to the previous discussion. It's obviously not a certainty, but a concern of this office, and so we advise accordingly. Should the council ultimately decide to award to Republic and to take advantage of the offer, I can assure you that we will expect that the indemnification would be absolutely a part of any subsequent negotiated contract.
Now, when you say indemnification, would you explain that?
The indemnification that the principal from Republic appear to have offered.
Okay, all right. The issue then comes into, from your experience on these contracts, and we deal with a lot of contracts out of DOT, if some vendor or business is unhappy, and they then sue because they believe we gave someone a better deal, such as bid enhancement, how does that impact our going forward on the bid?
Well, it depends upon, of course, the legal remedies sought...
If there's litigation and things like that.
And it certainly adds to all of the costs in addition. It is not...
Could it stop us from going forward?
We don't know.
Okay. Is that a potential?
It is a potential, because an unsuccessful bidder could ask for extraordinary remedies. I can't really comment as to the likelihood that it would be granted.
Okay, all right. The other thing I'd like to ask is from the department, Ms. Jeff, whether you could comment and clarify the issue about the stock on hand in relationship to the state law?
The stock on hand is fully compliant with the state law. We have documentation from our suppliers that these bulbs have been... Were manufactured before March of 2003. That puts us in compliance with the state law. In terms of the strength of the lighting that it provides to those traffic signals, they are also in full compliance with both federal and state statutes in this matter.
Okay, so we're not bypassing the law. We're within them.
We are not bypassing the law, either in spirit or in fact.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Cardenas, for a second time, to be followed by Ms. Gruel for a second time, and then Mr. Smith for a second time.
Thank you very much. I don't have enough time in the day to get down to the bottom of all this stuff, but I'm going to try to do it in about three minutes, and when appropriate, if you could hold my time, Mr. President. First of all, Gloria, I got to tell you, you said something earlier, and I'd like to demonstrate for you, so you learn first and real clearly now that you've not been in charge of this department very long. Let me ask the city attorney. City Attorney, when does the City of Los Angeles put out an RFP and guarantee that award will take place?
Never.
Never. See, because Gloria, what you alluded to earlier was that in this particular case, an award was not guaranteed, right?
Yes.
Well, the fact of the matter is, welcome to the City of Los Angeles. Our RFP process is so screwed up that I don't think there's a vendor out there who's ever given an RFP to this city that actually thinks that there's going to be an award. We have so many examples where we've gone out to bid twice, three, four times. Some cases, it seems like we even gave up, and we don't even go out to bid on some of those things anymore. So here in the City of Los Angeles, we don't guarantee that RFPs are going to be awarded. Let me clarify that. Maybe where you were at before, they had a system much better than ours, where they actually went out to RFP. People could count on the fact that there was going to be a contract met, and then that we were going to see some work done. But here in the City of Los Angeles, it's a sad state of affairs when it comes to RFPs. City Attorney or department, what method do you use to guarantee that the information that was requested actually did arrive and receipt, a return receipt or something like that? My time, please.
I'm sorry. What information are you referring to?
Well, there's a Public Request Act about when these items were purchased and whether or not they have the born-on date that's appropriate on these bulbs.
Right. We had 10 days to respond. We immediately put together the information, gave it back to the city attorney, and it was forwarded then to the attorneys who requested it.
You're not answering my question. My question is, what method do you use to make sure that the other end received it? There's return receipt, you deliver it, sign here. How do we know that they received it? Because the attorney for them just told me. I'm their attorney, and to this moment, they have not received that information. We see some information, but not that information.
The information that I'm familiar with, Councilmember, is the material Mr. Fisher's referring to, which is the Department of Transportation material. I personally mailed that to the attorneys, and I believe they did receive it. I don't know if the gentleman is referring to additional or separate material that may have been in the custody of General Services. That I can't speak to.
The specific information the attorney was referring to was the information that pertains to the receipts of what was purchased and when it was purchased bulbs, just to clarify what they meant by that. And to this moment, that attorney is saying he has not received that specific information. They've received some, but not that information. Also, what I don't like about this whole analysis is, we've had analysis going back close to two years now, and we seem to be discounting certain information today that we weren't willing to discount back then. There's certain information, such as the energy savings, that back then was right square in the middle of the entire debate, and now it seems that because it's the Department of Water and Power savings and not the general fund savings, that it's really not a big a factor. But the bottom line is, I want to clarify for all of you, is to save the citizens of Los Angeles, be it ratepayer or taxpayer, a dollar more per day or millions of dollars more per year is critical, and that is a big factor in my mind. As a policymaker, I have to blend those two together, and I have to look at it, because those are the same constituents. My time's up. I'll push my button again.
May I speak to that? The CAO and CLA did a joint report February 27, and we actually did include the energy costs. So there is a table that shows how we got to the $3.3 million in energy savings.
And if I can add, and I mentioned in my earlier comments, there's no question, and we recognize in our report that there will be savings to the ratepayers. The other thing you have to keep in mind, that the additional costs, because I have real concerns about this loan, I have real concerns regarding whether or not we stay within the legal parameters of a contracting process. So I want to assume that we're going to pay the cost, the full cost, the two-year cost upfront, and not accept this enhancement, and not accept this loan that they're speaking of, or even allowing... Wait, wait, but...
President, point of clarification. With all due respect, Mr. Fujioka, I think it's important for us as policymakers to understand the statement you just made. With all due respect, when they've made the RFP, they made certain provisions and offers to the city if they do business. But the fact of the matter is this: I was a business owner myself, and I actually had receipts coming my way. And with all due respect, Mr. President, to call that transaction a loan unequivocally is inappropriate, because it can be done in a way where it is not legally or otherwise or even erroneously labeled as a loan. Though they can be done in many ways. It's not necessarily a loan.
Mr. Cardenas, can we bring this point up when you speak next? It's not a parliamentary point of clarification. Okay.
At this point in time, if we do pay the total cost in a two-year period, and it is $22 million, which represents an additional cost of $7 million a year, yes, I understand the benefit in energy conservation that the ratepayers will realize. You have to remember, though, that when we get into Budget and Finance, we will be asked to look at other... A way to fund that additional $7 million that will also have a detriment to the same individuals you're trying to help at this point in time. If you are going to decide to do this, at the very least, I'd ask that you postpone your decision, and you do it in the context of the proposed budget, so you can see the consequences of your action and not do this in isolation. I strongly feel that the five-year plan is a fiscally responsible plan, but if you decide to do this, we will start the ad hoc budget hearings on April 27. We'll be into the budget shortly thereafter. So if you... And then we can have time for the city attorney to look at the issue that's been put before them to do some research and not have to just respond here at the table, so we can have all the information before us. But if you do decide, if there are additional costs, if we do this in the context of the budget, you can understand the consequences of making this decision and what other programs will have to reduce. Thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. One quick question, and Trina, you just mentioned this, and the savings, and this has been a moving target, as you can see again. Why, even though it's been almost two years and three separate committees that it's gone through, it still is a moving target, and Bill, this part of it. So if you... The most recent financial aspect that you brought to bear was the $1.6 million for the purchase of the bulbs, which makes the City of Los Angeles doing more feasible.
That's the overall DOT program.
Sorry, say again.
That's the overall DOT program over five years.
Over five years, correct. And if you take into consideration the $3.3 million, how does that, if it's legal or it's not bid enhancement?
Well, I believe that's the reason that some folks have referred to this as a wash. If you have $1.6 million in savings, let's say you repeat that again over the next maintenance cycle, then you're looking at something like $3.2 million worth of savings if you use city forces. If you're comparing that with the DDP savings, which is 3.3, then over, for example, a 10 to 12-year cycle, you may be looking at costs that are very similar. However, here's part of our concern about using a contractor in the short term. As you've heard mentioned before, if we go with a two-year contract, that makes us more likely to go with a contract in future maintenance cycles. Even if technology were to extend the life of the bulbs, it would still be impractical to, and I believe DOT will agree with this, it would still be impractical to stretch out that maintenance cycle for much more than one year. That would potentially take us to three years on a maintenance cycle. Then we would find ourselves in a situation again where we would be likely reliant on a contractor, and in this case, in the maintenance cycle, we cannot know whether we would be able to finance those costs or not. Part of our concern is that we would wind up in a debt cycle if we were to contract out in perpetuity. So the cost stretched out over a long period of time between the potential added interest and the savings that accrues to the city if we use city forces. In the long run, it would appear that we would save costs to use city forces.
And so colleagues, our, you know, and I think that is, and I agree with Mr. Cardenas in his... We have to look at this in a financial way. What is going to, whether you're a ratepayer at DWP, a taxpayer, all the same, our constituents, what is going to be, one, the most cost-effective? What can we legally support? And what is environmentally, which I think also Mr. Smith has brought up, the issues of ensuring that we can, as quickly as possible, be able to do that, and to take all of that into consideration? And we probably won't get all three. We have to pick and choose. And so again, that's why in the committee, I went with the... Going with the city forces. So as you make your decision, it is looking at what legally... And I like to ask Shelley Smith, because this is a question that a lot of us are basing our decisions, and we're, you know, we're entrusting in both our CLA, CAO, Department of Transportation, and the city attorney, because this question's been asked offline, online. Is this bid enhancement or not? Because whether or not someone sues us or not, that's a question that I think a lot of our decision here is related to.
I can only express the concern I expressed before. It depends a great deal, of course, on whether or not an unsuccessful bidder would challenge the issue. We would generally not recommend that any respondent change the terms and conditions of their offer to the city once the RFPs have been issued. And I think that in this instance, there are many policy as well as legal issues that are on the table, and I know that makes the decision very difficult for all the colleagues on the horseshoe. But we certainly feel legally much more comfortable with the CLA, CAO, and department recommendation with respect to protecting the city and ensuring that the competitive procurement process is not tainted.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, for a second time. Mr. Cardenas for a third.
Thank you. Mr. Fujioka, where'd you go? Mr. Fujioka, did you take into account that in the third, fourth, and fifth year of the two-year plan, that the Republic is responsible for the maintenance, that we wouldn't... That we wouldn't, that in our, in your plan, city crews are out there doing it still, but on that plan, they're, bear the responsibility for that maintenance. Did you factor in the cost savings from that?
That, that's part of the entire cost. We, we, we did look at that, you know, that was considered...
How much is it?
The, um, do you have that dollar amount? It's about, they're saying it's about $300,000.
A year.
What Trina said earlier...
A year?
Was it annually?
It's gotta be more than that.
No, that, that's, that's the whole five-year period.
No, it couldn't be. What, how much does it cost for those seven employees with all their benefit packages for one year? It's gotta be more than 300,000 for seven people.
We just saw the difference in the total cost and the maintenance for that. You have to look at the, the total cost of the two contracts, or the contracts in the five-year plan and having city staff, you know, perform the work.
How much is the cost of those seven employees with their benefit packages on an annualized basis?
We'll get that for you.
Okay. While they're looking that up, Mr. Fujioka, second thing, you said you've gone to the printer with the mayor's budget, right? You didn't want to make any changes because you've gone to the printer with the budget and it's now coming over the council. Is that correct? That's what you said?
Yes.
Now, let me ask you something. How long you been budget director? Eight years now?
Yes.
Okay, I've been here for 27 years. Have we ever passed in that timeframe, the mayor's budget without making a change?
Which is true.
No, the answer is no. There, now that's true.
And that, that's true, but what I'm saying right now, if you should decide to go with Republic, I'd ask, one, I, my recommendation is not to, but two, if you should decide that, then I'm asking you that you make that decision in the context of, you know...
Find out. That's not what you let people, your argument was, we've already sent the budget over, we shouldn't be making changes in that. And the point of matter is, we sit around here and make a whole heck of a lot of changes over a couple of weeks and the budget looks totally different when it leaves this building and goes over the mayor's office than when it got here.
On that part, I stand corrected.
Okay.
I stand corrected. I wanted to qualify the comments by saying, if you do make a significant, a change of this significant, it should be done in the context of the proposed budget.
Exactly. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
We understand that. So I just wanted to clarify your comments because it was misleading.
And I accept that.
Okay. Now, the point again, do you have an answer on the year annualized cost of those employees?
The annualized cost, the annualized cost as we have it here is about $800,000 for our staff to actually perform the work. In addition, if the contractor does it, it will cost us about, um, 50, $50,000 a year to do the inspect, I'm sorry, 500,000, dropped to zero. Uh, 500,000 dollars a year to do the actual inspection of the work that the contractor would perform.
500,000 dollars to inspect their work?
Yes.
It's the government, Mr. Smith.
Yeah. I need to sit down a minute. That shook me. 500, we're gonna spend 500,000 dollars to go out and inspect the work that's already been done on, after they've put it up once, but on an ongoing basis, you're saying?
No.
Okay, one time.
Yes.
That's all part of the con, that's all part of the package. We understand that. I asked, what was the cost of those seven employees on an annualized basis with the benefit packages? Tell them what?
800,000.
800,000 a year?
Yes.
So for three years, for 2.4 million dollars, we're bearing that cost for those employees versus the contractor's proposal, which is do it in two years. And then we hit a two-year bulge where we go out and fix the bulbs theoretically, if you accept their, their thesis that all of them are gonna go bad at the same time. And over two years, we're gonna have this big bulge in repairs. And then for another three years, again, we save 2.4 million dollars by not putting city staff on. If you want more people in the budget, ask for more people. This is a guy's attempt to build your staff. It's all it is. And I'm sorry, we disagree the first time here in this chamber. Uh, I wish you well, but I think we disagree. This is a guy's attempt to build staff. That's all we're doing, folks. And it's gonna cost us long, a lot more money in the long run to do that. If you want more people to do those other projects, bring them in in the context of the budget and let's analyze that impact. I think you've heard from Mr. Rosen, a lot of us around here know we need more people in DOT because there's a lot of stuff not getting done and I think we'd be receptive to that. But it's being built up as a guy is, is bait and switch, folks. That's what we're looking at here. Finally, I disagree with you again. I say very clearly, we are complying with the letter of the law, we are not complying with the spirit of the law. The spirit of the law was to create energy efficient lights and we should do it quickly rather than sitting here six years after the law passed debating about a five-year plan to do. We're gonna be 11 years out from when that law passed and we are not getting it done. Folks, let's do the, the right thing for the people of LA. Let's create the energy efficiency that was in spirit of the law. Let's get this done in two years, even if it may cost us a little bit more and not use this as an ability to build up city staff because that's all it really is.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, Mr. Westen for the first time and then Mr. Cardenas.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President and, and, and members. I'd like to ask a couple of quick questions, so if you could hold my time. Um, this energy savings, I guess I'll direct it to you, Mr. Fujioka. Uh, the 3.3 million, that's what your reports indicate will occur if we go with a two-year program. The 3.3? The question is, um, yes. Now, is this 3.3 million a year or is this 3.3 million after two years?
3.3 million is the difference between if we install over a two-year period as opposed to a five-year period. Eventually, when all of the LEDs are in place, we're gonna generate 2.2 million dollars worth of savings. It's the incremental difference between having the contractor install over two years and having the city forces do it over five.
But if we do, if we do the, if we do the five-year plan, we will get some energy savings.
Oh, absolutely.
Correct? I mean, this won't be the...
Right.
The, the, the 3.3 or whatever it is.
Right. That means as of year six, we're gonna be generating, the end of year five, the beginning of year six, we're gonna be generating 2.2 million dollars worth of savings.
Okay, thank you. You know, um, one of the things that I love most about government is the debate and the discussion and, and, and we need to do that. And today has been a very, a very good one. And I want to say to, to the contractor that I appreciate the tenacity in which you guys are, are fighting to, to get this, this contract. With that said, at the end of the day, the decision where it relates to what we're gonna do is up to us. And I think that there, you have to have a certain degree of trust in your CAO, uh, since we hired him, that he's responsible for making sure that financially we're in good stead. And so I think that I do have some concerns where it relates to additional costs if we do this two years compared to the five years. Another thing that, that, that I want to say is that I don't view this as a trick or a gimmick to increase staff of the Department of Transportation. I don't think that Ms. Jeff has been here long enough to, to be gimmicky. Okay? But what I do see, a creative opportunity to have high-level staff perform this function, high-level staff that can multitask, that can do other things also to help us with our transportation concerns throughout the city of, this great city of Los Angeles. And I also have a concern where it relates to the possibility of this spike, where we'd have to come back and do all this all over again. So the one thing that I would urge my colleagues today is that we take a, a up or down, yes or no vote. We do it today. I don't think that we discussed this in the context of, of, of the budget. I think we've had a debate and this is just gonna be one of the things where we're going to have to sit down and take action. So at this point, I'm convinced or comfortable with the recommendation that I've received from the department and from our CAO.
Amen. Thank you very much. Uh, our last speaker is Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Um, one thing that I'd like to clarify, the vendor and the vendor's lawyer just told me that Local 11 is the shop where they would be getting the workers. If somebody from Local 11 can come up forward and either, uh, confirm that or explain to us how that's erroneous, my time please.
I have the, I'm Daniel Vial, IBW Local 11. I have the unique distinction of representing all of the employees concerned here. And, uh, obviously this is a, a very delicate issue for us internally. Uh, we do represent employees under MOU 35, which are IBW Local 11, which the department may use, uh, to ramp up. We do represent the, your civil servants. Um, we also represent employees that this contractor, uh, should call from our union hall, which are local Los Angeles employees. Unfortunately, this, uh, the, the contractor in question is a visitor to our area and they are working with another IBW, uh, local outside of Los Angeles, of the city of Los Angeles, outside of IBW Local 11, uh, to supply manpower. And our position remains and has been from the beginning, that this work belongs to the citizens of Los Angeles, that it belongs to the employees that we've trained and that the work should be performed by those employees. We would hope that should the contract be awarded, that the contractor would honor our jurisdiction and, uh, use our employees, but that remains to be seen.
Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to ask the contractor to come forward and, and clarify for us what your intent is, should you be successful in getting this contract? I'm not asking you to say anything you're not willing to divulge, but please clarify that because something contrary to what you just told a council member just came up. My time please.
Uh, no, I, I have no problem answering your question. We are an IBW contractor. We're signatories to IBW locals all over the country. And this is Local 11 territory here and of course, this is gonna be done with Local 11. What he's referring to is the outside local, which is, uh, represented, they basically represent the Edison, um, folks, but this is a Local 11, uh, territory.
And it's your intent to follow through with getting people from the Local 11 shop? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely. Now, the, the other, the other proposal that has, you know, I mentioned it, but hasn't been discussed again, is that if it is, if the city decides that they want to hire those seven employees, that we would be glad to, uh, take those seven employees for those two years. And so in other words, the city hires the seven employees, we will take those seven employees as the same local, at the end of the two years, hand them back to you and then you can keep them for as long as you want. They'd be fully trained to do this. In our proposal, we include, already included five years of maintenance for the price of two. Um, and this, and with regard to, uh, the, um, uh, outsourcing, uh, to contractor, that is currently being outsourced to a non-union contractor today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the thing is, all I can do, with all due respect, all I can do is ask the potential employer of your, of, of some union hall to speak on the record as to whether or not your local would be the source. And he just said it was. So with all due respect, we're not gonna debate that point anymore. I mean, he, he's on record saying that.
He wanted me to clarify, um, the role...
Please clarify.
Okay.
My time please.
Our, our responsibility is to, or my particular responsibility is to the civil servants. Uh, under the MOU agreement, MOU 2, uh, the city has an obligation not to affect the size of the unit by contracting workout. That's a legal obligation, an agreement that we have and it's our responsibility to protect that. So, although I appreciate the contractor's flexibility, um, as he has shown throughout the entire process, um, you know, that's not the way this thing functions. You're, you're supposed to put it all on the table at the beginning. Everybody's supposed to have a fair shake. And the employees of the city of Los Angeles are trained, they perform this function. The function that's contracted out to a non-union, uh, employer is the cleaning of lamps and the replacement of the lamps. This is for construction or, um, the...
Hardcore maintenance.
I'm sorry. Yeah, the, the conversion process, which is a, it's a function that the maintenance department is currently handling in DOT. When a, when a pole goes down, these guys come out and they refurbish that pole and put in this new technology. You're already doing it. There's no, there's no reason for us to give it to somebody else. I, I, I just don't understand why we're still discussing this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, at this time, uh, I've seen this issue before a committee when I formally chaired that committee. I followed this issue, uh, for many, many, many months now. Uh, I think today is probably one of the more confusing, uh, days on this matter that we've had in the many discussions over, over time. Um, and what I would like to do right now, members, is I would like to make a substitute motion that we, uh, go, we vote on a two-year contracting to the lowest and responsible bidder, so the city of Los Angeles can continue, uh, to negotiate with that particular contractor and hopefully we arrive at a legal binding, responsible two-year replacement, keeping in mind that we're looking at getting ourselves to a 1.2 plus million dollar energy savings in this city, uh, as soon as possible, instead of doing it over a longer period of time as, as five years. So I would offer that as a substitute motion, that we go ahead and vote on, uh, going with the RFP process and awarding it to the lowest and responsible bidder.
For clarification, is that in lieu of all the committee reports, um, on items 22 and 23? Or are you moving one of the committee reports in 23?
Um, 23.
Okay, on the C E N R? So that wouldn't necessarily be a substitute, you just would be moving the C E N R report?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Mr. Weiss.
Call the question.
You, you are the final speaker, so I think there's no opposition to that whatsoever. Okay, yes, we will walk through this slowly. Um, Madam Clerk, if you'll let us know, I think we have to take both items up separately, first of all, colleagues.
Uh, yes, and the only motion that, or the only report that has been moved at the present time is C E N R report and that's on item number 23.
Okay, if there's, if nobody moves any other report, we will just be voting on that one, um, initially. And if you, and the recommendation of that, Madam Clerk?
Uh, the recommendation on, um, on that report is, uh, be in item 23 and that would be to accept the proposal of Republic Electric, authorize DOT to negotiate and execute a contract with Republic, uh, to perform the citywide LED conversion as detailed in recommendation number one, direct the LA DOT to work with the equipment vendors to proceed, uh, in the two-year span, uh, direct LA DOT to evaluate the number of DOT personnel required, award the contract, uh, to Republic Electric, direct, uh, DOT and DWP to work with the LED equipment vendors to retest the equipment, um, and et cetera.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Parks?
I move that we, uh, adopt, uh, 22 on option, uh, that deals with the five-year proposal of the CAO's report.
Okay, is there a second?
Okay, Mr. Zine seconds that. And, and, uh, why don't we take up item 22 first? We would, if we adopted the motion right now before us on 23 and that motion on 22, do those conflict, Madam Clerk?
Yes, they do.
Okay. So, um, the proper order would be to take up the last motion first. So on item 22, unless there's any other motions, 22, to clarify one more time, is the budget and finance and personnel joint report, which does not conflict on that. That is to, uh, one, to approve the five-year city force, the city forces LED conversion. That's the main part, I think, of the dispute or the discussion, excuse me here. So with that, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 3 noes.
Okay, that is approved. We do have another motion before us, but I think that is, would it be in order to still vote on that?
Uh, since 22 passed, it would actually, 23 is the move point unless council wishes to vote.
Okay.
I think it should be moved to receive and file.
So is there a motion to receive and file, 23? Okay, Mr. Padilla moves that. I will second that.
Okay. And that would be the, all, all the...
All four.
All four.
Yeah. Please open the roll on receiving and file, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thank you, Members of House.
15 ayes.
That is received and filed and will send that forth with, please, on item 22. Uh, I believe that finishes the regular meeting, is that right?
Uh, there is one more item, um, however, I believe there is a special meeting.
Let's move to the special meeting. I know we have two chiefs, one from police and one from fire here on this item. So if we can please, uh, recess the regular meeting and, um, call the roll for the special meeting.
Cardinalist Grul Han, Weezer Labange, Padilla Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosenell Smith, Weiss, Weston Zine-Garcetti, 15 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, there's a quorum established. We have item one first.
The first item on the agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items one and two, and they both deal with Homeland Security and Disaster Preparedness Plan.
Mr. Weiss, would you like to take those up both together? We'll call those special. Okay? And item three?
Item number three is the communication from the Chair and Member of Energy and Environment and Ad hoc River Report has been submitted, and that's regarding the LA River.
Okay. Because there wasn't a quorum, Ms. Perry, would you like to move that report for number three? Okay. Motion, Mr. Reyes will second that. We can please prepare the roll on three and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Let's send that forthwith as well. And that will return us to items one and two, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Weiss, Chair of Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, the matter before us is a Homeland Security and Disaster Preparedness Plan that has been presented by Mayor Villarrealosa and myself through motion, but let's be honest here, this is something which has been a long time coming and has been off discussed, and today we have the opportunity to pass it. Today, we have the opportunity to make the first permanent counterterrorism investment in this city's intelligence capabilities since 9/11. And I'm going to ask the folks at the table to bring you up to speed on the details in a moment. Let me just note that by way of framing why we're here and why this is so important, I just want to ask you all to recall what happened last summer, which is a very significant criminal case was brought in this district last summer by the United States Attorney, solely, frankly, as a result of police work by local police, by the Torrance Police Department. The case was built up eventually by federal authorities, by a task force, but the key break in the case came because of a hunch by the Torrance Police Department. Four local folks had become radical jihadists, and they had planned to launch terror attacks in the city of Los Angeles at multiple locations. They were in the process of acquiring the materials they needed for their attacks when local police officers on the scene made the key decisions that led to the break in that case. That case is now pending in federal court. And similarly, over the course of the past year, another key case was brought in the Valley involving the Vineland Boys. That was another major gang case, not a terrorism case, but a local crime case. Key support for that case was offered by the LAPD's Counterterrorism Bureau. The reality is that these days, when it comes to terrorism preparedness, we're in the all-hazards business. If you do a better job of preparing your city for a terrorist attack, you are doing a better job of preparing your city for an earthquake, for a fire, or another major disaster. Similarly, if you do a better job in your city of preparing yourself to detect a terrorist attack, you are doing a better job of detecting organized crime, gang crime, street crime, and low-level precursor crimes. So, it's an all-hazards business, both in the response arena, where the fire department is, and in the detection and prevention business, where the police department is. But frankly, for too long in Los Angeles, we've been renting this capability. Today, we will make the first major investment towards ownership. And as your parents always told you, it's better to own than it is to rent. And I'd like to turn it over to the Deputy Mayor, Marie Suh, on behalf of the mayor, Chief Bratton in his department, Chief Pamatry in his department, and Chief Fujioka in his department.
It's a pleasure to be--
Pleasure to be before you to address the counsel on the mayor's Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness Package. This groundbreaking package contains the elements to ensure that the Los Angeles Police Department and the Fire Department have the tools and resources necessary to address our changing world that we live in, a world in which cities are responsible for protecting us against domestic as well as foreign terrorist threats, and a world in which cities take the lead in responding to even the largest mass disasters. There are four central components to the package. I'll have, I'll have the LAPD and the Fire Department talk about the details, but the four central components are staffing, the Fusion Center to increase our intelligence coordination, staffing Operation Archangel, the cutting-edge program that protects our critical infrastructure here in the Los Angeles area, increasing our intelligence analysis, bomb squad personnel, and emergency operations personnel, and increasing the Fire Department's tactical training and mass disaster planning capability. We are very fortunate to have here in the city the finest police chief, as well as the finest fire chief, leading two fantastic departments that are both at the cutting edge of operations and mass disaster response. The purpose of my remarks is to detail five central reasons why this package is important to us here in the city. The first one, and perhaps the most important one, is that the components of the package directly address concerns raised by not only the Hurricane Katrina report, but the 9/11 Commission report. We do live in a changing world, a world in which the cities have undertaken the mantle of this responsibility, and we are on notice that we have that responsibility. The components of the package address that responsibility directly. Secondly, it acts to supplement our role in coordinating with our sister agencies, both the federal agencies, as well as the county and other municipalities and their police forces. As we approach our threats and hazards on a mass disaster scale, it is critical that we have this central coordination with other departments and other agencies, and our package does precisely that. The third thing it does is it primarily addresses our intelligence capabilities. In this world, intelligence is the name of the game, and it helps us prevent these threats before they occur. The fourth is that it is mindful of our budgetary constraints. While the package is at its cutting edge, it also recognizes that we live in a world of limited resources, and we have carefully tailored the components of the package to meet our budgetary constraints. And the fifth, and perhaps the most important one, is that we are mindful of the fact that increasing our counterterrorism capabilities increases our capability to fight crime in general, and in particular, gang crime. The intelligence function which it serves helps us coordinate all of our resources better and more effectively, and makes Los Angeles a safer place overall. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Fujioka to address some of this--
I don't know why all these folks are getting this chief name, but--
Congratulations.
I'm more than happy being just a city administrative officer, with all due respect to--
Don't worry, that's all you are.
My colleague, and that's all I should ever be. And I'm thankful for that. We have a report before you that's dated February 2nd that speaks to this issue. The report itself was the end product of many hours working with both the police and fire departments and looking at this critical issue. We have, as Councilman Weiss stated, over the past few years, somewhat cobbled together, you know, staff to perform this function. They were on loan from various entities throughout the department, and at the expense of those other entities. Now, what we feel is critical is that we permanently assign positions to this function that everyone will agree is, if not the, one of the most critical law enforcement and fire safety functions in the city of Los Angeles. There's a list of eighty-three positions that we're recommending, they're new positions. Of that, seventy-three positions would be in LAPD, ten would be in, in the Fire Department. We're asking that you appropriate no money this year. If necessary, as we work with the departments on their respective budgets, we've identified money currently in the UB that we feel will not be needed this year, that can be appropriated to the department to fund additional positions. On a go-forward basis, although it's difficult for me to discuss the mayor's proposed budget at this time, as, as Marie stated, this, as you know, public safety is one of the mayor's highest priorities, if not his highest priority. And this, this package, the Homeland Security package, is absolutely addressed and funded in the, in the mayor's budget. I'm going to let our two chiefs speak to the functions that will be, or the various programs that will, will be staffed through, through this, through what's in front of you today. I'm here to speak to the financial issues. You know that our office looks at things very, very carefully. It only strongly recommends items that meet both, you know, the city's fiscal policies, financial responsibilities, but also the impact and the, and the needs to the, to the citizens. We feel strongly about this package. We urge that you take action today and put these programs in place. But with that, I'll turn it over to our police chief.
Thank you. Morning. It's a pleasure to be, once again, before you to speak on this issue, and my thanks and appreciation to Mayor Antonio Villarrealosa for prioritizing this shortly after his election to the position of mayor. He was briefed by my office on the issues of terrorism, counterterrorism, what the city was doing about it, and what the potential threats were to this city, and immediately began to put together the package that is now before you. The rationale for this package has been presented by Deputy Mayor Suh, Los Angeles, along with New York and Washington DC. It is understood is one of the three most likely terrorist targets in the United States for a variety of reasons well-known to you. The ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach, forty percent of the goods coming into the United States come in through that facility. The international gateway of LAX, the entertainment capital of the United States, all types of reasons why this city has been and will continue to be targeted by both international terrorists, Al Qaeda, Osama bin Laden, as well as the Torrance case reinforced the increasing concern about the homegrown threat. And along those lines, the homegrown threat, we are particularly reminded of the events in London, the two bombings, and the Spanish train bombings, all committed by local nationals, not imported by foreign terrorists. And in the ongoing discussions, particularly with our counterparts in England, their biggest concern remains not international terrorism, but local terrorism. And that certainly is the case here in Los Angeles. As police chief in Los Angeles, I spend about forty percent, if not fifty percent, of my time on this issue. That's reflective of how critical I believe it is to this city. In 1994, I was police commissioner of the city of New York. After the first World Trade Center bombing, I did not spend five percent of my time on that issue. We by and large felt we had had the first significant attack on American soil. It had been thwarted, and the issue was no longer a significant priority. We learned that that was unfortunately not the case. 9/11 changed everything as it relates to law enforcement. This issue will have to remain, along with crime and disorder, for all time, a priority of any urban police department, but particularly here in Los Angeles for the stated reasons. We have been targeted, we will be targeted, and we will be attacked. We will do our best to prevent that, and we have indicated, as Councilmember Weiss, who strong supporter of this bill is appreciated, has indicated the Torrance case was one that we came within a hair's breadth of actually those attacks being effectuated here in the city. Marie Suh, the deputy mayor, has indicated that there are four significant benefits to the Los Angeles Police Department and its ability to fight this issue, or deal with this issue. We have been in the forefront of creativity as it relates to how to deal with the identification of targets and the hardening of those targets from attack. That's our Archangel Project, initiated here in Los Angeles, presented to Washington, resulted in a $3 million grant to create the national model prototype system, the matrix, if you would, on how to identify what are your critical sites, how to prioritize them, how to defend and protect them. We are soon going to be in a position to embark on taking that system that was developed here in Los Angeles to the national level that the federal government is desirous of doing. We need to increase the staffing of that unit, as we have now developed the prototype matrices, to now begin to actually go out and harden the many sites in the city that have been identified as critical sites and prioritized as such. Secondly, that we are going to open very shortly with the federal government, a joint Secondly, that we are going to open very shortly with the federal government, a joint regional intelligence center, J-RIC. regional intelligence center, J-RIC. It will be the most modern in the country. It will be the most modern in the country. It is a fusion center. It is a fusion center. There are five elements that have to be dealt with in dealing, not only with traditional There are five elements that have to be dealt with in dealing, not only with traditional crime, that we learned to deal with successfully in the 1990s, and in this city, continuing crime, that we learned to deal with successfully in the 1990s, and in this city, continuing into the 21st century, we have been very successful applying these five principles into the 21st century, we have been very successful applying these five principles to the point that crime this year, for example, in the city of Los Angeles is down another to the point that crime this year, for example, in the city of Los Angeles is down another 12%. 12%. Homicides, as of this morning, are down another 22% for this year. Homicides, as of this morning, are down another 22% for this year. And those five principles are quite simply timely, accurate intelligence. And those five principles are quite simply timely, accurate intelligence. The name of policing, whether it's traditional criminal or now the new terrorism fear, is The name of policing, whether it's traditional criminal or now the new terrorism fear, is intelligence. intelligence. You have to have people sitting in rooms, working with computers, working with each You have to have people sitting in rooms, working with computers, working with each other, analyzing constantly that intelligence. other, analyzing constantly that intelligence. You need the capability to rapidly respond to what that intelligence tells you, who You need the capability to rapidly respond to what that intelligence tells you, who needs to be surveilled, who needs to be apprehended, who needs to be coordinated with. needs to be surveilled, who needs to be apprehended, who needs to be coordinated with. We need also effective tactics, what works, what doesn't work, constantly seeking to improve We need also effective tactics, what works, what doesn't work, constantly seeking to improve our abilities. our abilities. And lastly, relentless follow-up, the idea that we are in this forever. And lastly, relentless follow-up, the idea that we are in this forever. This threat is not going away, and as this city emerges and continues to emerge as one This threat is not going away, and as this city emerges and continues to emerge as one of the leading cities in the world, a world-class city, driving the global economy with one of the leading cities in the world, a world-class city, driving the global economy with one of the largest economies in the world, we will continue to remain a terrorist threat, of the largest economies in the world, we will continue to remain a terrorist threat, so we need to be relentlessly continuing all of our efforts. so we need to be relentlessly continuing all of our efforts. And lastly, it's the focused use of resources. And lastly, it's the focused use of resources. I know there have been some concerns expressed in this resource-starved city about the idea I know there have been some concerns expressed in this resource-starved city about the idea of having seventy police officers assigned to this function who are not visible on the of having seventy police officers assigned to this function who are not visible on the streets. streets. Now, I'm sorry, that's the reality of Los Angeles being the city that it is. Now, I'm sorry, that's the reality of Los Angeles being the city that it is. We need to commit these resources. We need to commit these resources. But to allay those concerns, the reality is that most of these officers are actually But to allay those concerns, the reality is that most of these officers are actually performing a dual function, because while they're conducting counterterrorism initiatives, performing a dual function, because while they're conducting counterterrorism initiatives, they're also in a position to also support our traditional criminal activities and initiatives. they're also in a position to also support our traditional criminal activities and initiatives. As Jack Weiss pointed out, the Torrance case began with several individuals robbing As Jack Weiss pointed out, the Torrance case began with several individuals robbing gas stations. gas stations. Detectives following up on the arrest of those two individuals were able to determine Detectives following up on the arrest of those two individuals were able to determine that that they were actively engaged in terrorism, and were able to quickly assign resources they were actively engaged in terrorism, and were able to quickly assign resources from the federal government and the LAPD. from the federal government and the LAPD. I had almost a hundred people working for almost a month on this case, and that's one I had almost a hundred people working for almost a month on this case, and that's one of the reasons we were able to thwart the attacks before they began. of the reasons we were able to thwart the attacks before they began. So, in closing, I hope that the council believes, as the mayor believes, that this So, in closing, I hope that the council believes, as the mayor believes, that this is an essential component of the Los Angeles Police Department, one that must be staffed is an essential component of the Los Angeles Police Department, one that must be staffed appropriate to the threat, and that threat is real, it's constant, and it is expanding, appropriate to the threat, and that threat is real, it's constant, and it is expanding, not only internationally, but locally. not only internationally, but locally. And the devices that we've put into place, whether it's the Archangel, the J-RIC Center And the devices that we've put into place, whether it's the Archangel, the J-RIC Center that will be opening very shortly with the FBI, the continual improvement and enhancement that will be opening very shortly with the FBI, the continual improvement and enhancement of our bomb detection components, as well as our surveillance components, all of this of our bomb detection components, as well as our surveillance components, all of this will assure that we can make this, this city as safe as can possibly be expected in this will assure that we can make this, this city as safe as can possibly be expected in this day and age. day and age. Thank you. Thank you.
Please. Please.
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. Chief Pamatry, just want to follow up with certainly what has been brought forward by Chief Bratton and Marie Suh, and the importance that we see just last night, dealing with two separate large rallies that challenged the resources of the city to provide that public safety in what has, over the past two weeks, been really a normal occurrence with the large rally two weeks ago that had upwards of 500,000 people, with the school rallies the past two weeks, and then certainly culminating yesterday. And it really hit home to me as I stood on the patio there on the 18th floor of City Hall East, looking down on the Triforium and Fletcher Bowery Square, that there are upwards of around 10,000 people, and yet, we were able to work together with the city family, all the city agencies, to control traffic, to provide the restroom facilities, to provide medical facilities, and the control facilities to allow a rally to take place with little incident. We had two medical incidents, and that was the totality of our issues that we dealt with. It's something that is an ever-present challenge to the city of Los Angeles, whether it's preparing for a special event like the marathon, or a unplanned, or short-term event such as one of the rallies. They all center on the same thing, providing that public health and safety. And it's something that we do well when we have the opportunity to pre-plan and to prepare for those things. What this package provides for the Fire Department is a tactical planning capability to interface with the other city agencies, particularly the Police Department. And as we look at this joint regional intelligence center, that's information not just focused specifically on terrorism, but it'll provide us that capability to manage the many challenges that Los Angeles faces. Again, this week provides us a opportunity to frame that, as we move away from the weekend rallies, we get prepared again for the rain coming in. Southern California has been the only area in the state that really has suffered very small amounts of damage as a result of the ongoing rain. I think a lot of that has to do with the pre-planning and the efforts that we've been able to implement over the last few years. This capability is going to provide that confidence and the ability-- This capability is going to provide that confidence and the ability to interface as a city family. As we move forward with the new dispatch and emergency operations center, co-located will be the police operations center and the operations center of the fire department, as well as our dispatch center and the EOC. Everything is moving in a direction to have that integration of resources, the integration of intelligence, and certainly the pre-planning, and then the training. Disaster management, Katrina and the Gulf states brought home very clearly the importance of pre-planning for major disasters that involve the movements of large amounts of people under very challenging conditions. That's something that Los Angeles has done well, something we have to continue to prepare for, because our challenge here is the earthquake without warning that will be a sudden impact on all the resources and the impact on the city. We've got to build a public-private partnership that's going to allow us to prepare for that and to be able to manage that. So this package gives us a good foundation to build on that will give us a capability that allow us to move forward with the excellent relationships that are built both within the city, but also as we interface locally countywide for some of these issues.
Thank you, Chief Pamatry. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Bratton, I wanted to ask you to just expand for a moment on your comments about the dual function, sort of the dual purpose that these individuals in your department serve. You talked a little bit about how function, local cops helped break the Torrance case, but frankly, one concern that you and I hear a lot in not just this city, but in other parts of urban America is about the extent to which these individuals have functions that are relevant to other sorts of traditional crime fighting. And I wonder if you could talk a little bit about that and maybe tell people a little bit about how the J-RIC, the new Joint Regional Intelligence Center, which this will help fund and staff, will also play a role in street crime and violent crime and gang crime. Hold my time, please, Mr. President.
Emphasizing the point that the duality of the functions of officers that are assigned and civilians to this function, that we know for certainty that the funding of terrorism organizations oftentimes are done through more traditional criminal means. And so that the duality of these offices, their ability to be investigating a terrorism-related issue, but also finding that they may be actually investigating something that's from a more traditional crime background. We saw that certainly in the Torrance issue and a number of other cases that we have dealt with over time. There's also the idea of the coordination with the federal government, that we have extraordinarily good relationships in this city with our federal colleagues on not only the terrorism front, but on the traditional crime front. And the overlap of the investigations from time to time benefits from the idea that we are able to, in a sense, share information much more intimately than we have in the past. And the Fusion Center, the J-RIC Center, if you will, is an example of that. $4 million expenditure on the part of the federal government to build it. It will be staffed by the LAPD, Sheriff's Department, county chiefs, FBI, as well as other federal entities. And it will be pooling information from all sources. The people that will be assigned there will, in many instances, have the highest-level clearances conceivable. And they will be in a position, as information comes in, that might initially be part of a terrorist investigation. After review, analysis, determination is made, it does not have a terrorism link, but there is the ability to quickly move that over to the traditional criminal side of the house. And we are consciously designing these systems so that there's that easy movement between the two entities, the traditional criminal into the now the newer area of terrorism.
So is it fair to say that this plan does not only dramatically increase our abilities to detect a terrorist attack, but you expect it to have a significant impact in the fight against street crime, gang crime, and organized crime?
Certainly. For example, the personnel that are used for surveillance, our SIS unit, they are trained to both surveil for terrorism purposes, as well as the purpose that they've been created 40 years ago, which was to deal with armed robberies. And similarly, our bomb squad personnel deal with now the necessity of terrorism issues, as well as the traditional incidents that they would investigate. So there is a multiplicity of functions that these personnel will perform. In any event, what we are actually creating here is a best practice, the idea we look very closely at what New York, Washington, and other cities are doing. I spend a lot of time personally meeting with my counterparts in those cities, as well as internationally. We're constantly learning from each other, and the one thing we have learned is that the information has to go both ways, terrorism, crime, crime, terrorism.
One other conceptual issue I'd like you to address, and then my colleagues have some questions, which is, there was an op-ed recently in the Los Angeles Times that you read and that I read. I found it, it wasn't just wrong, it was dangerously wrong. It was an op-ed that stated very, very directly that in the opinion of that author, local police departments, and in particular the LAPD, have no business in the terrorism detection business, that that is exclusively a federal responsibility, and that cities should just basically sit around on their hands and wait for Uncle Sam to protect us from the different terrorist threats. I truly believe that that is one of the most dangerously wrong perceptions, and to hear that five years after 9/11, well, it just shows you how much more we have to go in terms of getting people to understand the reality. I'd like to hear your response to that.
Well, the author of that letter, who I don't know quite simply, is an idiot, that he has no understanding whatsoever of the complexities of the world we live in today. Reality is, the federal government, the totality of their efforts in this area, is about 40,000 people, 11,000, 12,000, the Bureau. If you add up all the federal agencies together, they are relatively in the tens of thousands. They cannot deal with this issue without the 800,000 local law enforcement agencies, the coordination with the fire services, particularly to deal with the homegrown threat. During World War II, we relied on the home guard, if you will, here to help protect the country within its borders. The face of terrorism has changed. It is no longer just the external threat that we relied on the FBI and the CIA to protect us against that. The threat is as significant within our borders, and that's what we need, the focus in terms of to be, one, excellent coordination with our colleagues in the federal government, but also excellent coordination among the local law enforcement agencies. That's why all these Fusion Centers, all these efforts are all coordinated intimately with the Sheriff's Department, as well as our colleagues in the other county police agencies.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. First of all, Chief, I want both chief bills, I want you to know I'm absolutely in support of what we're talking about here today. In fact, I was with the Billing Owners Association here in Los Angeles this morning, and a guy said, he went to an event where the fire department and police department are there, talking about evacuation plans, and they didn't agree on how to evacuate and wanted to know why we didn't have better coordination. I said, "It's coming." So I'm glad to see this here. I have one question for Chief Bratton, really, and again, I actually support what you're doing here. The question I dealt with, a question that came up committee, which was 2G dealing with civilianization issues. As I look at the plan, we're looking at 73 police officers, 66 of which are sworn in that department. As we look at, and I think 47 were P3s, are really our most important field personnel, the P3s, the senior officers out there. And my concern is, every day of the week, in my area, as well as other parts of the city, we're dropping cars because we don't have enough people. We've put money into hiring more, but we're having a very tired time getting those numbers. And I know what you're going through to recruit and bring people here and to help bring the department up to those numbers. But the fact of the matter is, we're not there yet, and we're not hitting those goals and those numbers. So my concern is, we're pulling people out of the streets once again. My question to you is, and I read the response here, and I didn't quite understand the answer, so I'm giving you a chance to answer that, maybe Mr. Fujioka has some points on that, to the question of civilianization. We're losing 400 to 500 drop people in the next 18 months, well-trained police officers, sworn officers, very experienced, who could maybe civilianize some of those positions that we don't need sworn personnel at. Why can't we utilize some of those people coming off of drop as civilian employees? Because they're highly trained already, and I was talking to a lot of these folks out there, they're going, "You know what? I'm due to drop this next year, and I haven't figured out what I'm going to do with my life." What a great opportunity to use that expertise and keep our field personnel in the field where we so desperately need them. So on my time, if you would, please, tell me why we need to pull those people out of the streets. Why couldn't we civilianize some of those positions with some of the folks coming off of drop?
I'll let Mark Leep, Commander Mark Leep, speak to that with more specificity, but over time, the issue of civilianization is probably going to be appropriate. Federal government is attempting, without much success, to civilianize its analyst functions at this juncture. The urgency right now is to get capable, qualified people into those seats, the 40 who are already there, as well as the additional 33. But let me let Mark speak to that. This has been his area of expertise for the last four years, and he can outline it more specifically.
Councilman, that is one, and the issue that we are looking at. It would be most appropriate to civilianize some of the intelligence analyst positions. We have really actually attempted to do that. We have a contract through the state of California to hire some civilian intelligence analysts. The problem we're facing is that we can't afford to pay them what they can make in other industries. And there is literally more demand than there is a supply for this particular position. And so every time that somebody is trained, gets the proper security clearances, they're hired away at sometimes twice the salary that they would be making at the LAPD. And naturally, we cannot continually act as a replenishment pool for the rest of the industry. We saw that happen with police officers years ago, when we would hire them, train them, and then they would go off to other careers with other departments. So what we have done is created a career ladder within the LAPD for sworn personnel to start off in the intelligence analyst field and to work their way up, remaining in that field, because it does take a lot of expertise, it does take the classifications and clearances that they need, so that we can retain that ability within our ranks. Certainly, as more people become trained in intelligence analysis functions, and as they get more clearances, we will attempt to replace some of our sworn personnel with civilians. But we can't do that right now, and I don't see that we'll have the ability to do that for at least five years.
Well, my time didn't stop, unfortunately. Let me just have a follow-up question.
Take a little time, you have 46 seconds.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like Mr. Fujioka to make a comment on that, but my comment, again, is, I believe out of the drop personnel, 235 or so are detectives. I got to think some of them are trained enough to do that kind of work, and they're going off drop, so they've already got a pension income, plus they have a civilian, it's basically another form of drop.
If I can add something, I think, I believe Mark, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, is speaking to some very specific assignments as related to today's package. In a very, in a much broader context, our personnel department is in the process of finalizing a new classification that will be placed in LAPD. It's called crime analysts. But in a broader context, because we do have people who are going off on drop, we have, in the past, we've hired retired LAPD officers to function as background investigators in the personnel department. There will be opportunities, it's our intent to work closely with the police department to meet, is that balance between meeting their operational needs, and yet ensuring that our sworn resources are used in the best fashion. So we will be working with the department and looking at not these highly specialized assignments, but more the generalist assignments, where we can civilianize, and as a consequence, move people back to patrol assignments. But yet, the balance is giving the chief the flexibility to ensure that he puts the most qualified individuals in these highly specialized functions. But we will be looking at that, because there are some opportunities. And the chief and I have discussed it. He came up with one idea that we're just kind of developing right now, not in this area, but in a different area, that could result in moving more sworn resources into police operations.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that, and I want to keep looking at it. And if nothing else, we can always deputize Lieutenant Garcetti over here. He's an intelligence officer, and we could maybe bring him back.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. Chief, and chief, thank you for your patience. I know that you've been struggling with this, going through the bureaucratic process. Mark Leep, you've aged many years in this period of time, shepherding this through the system, so I understand. It's gone through many committees, and I know it's gone through a lot of questions and answers and meetings. I know that it's been a long time in coming, so I want to thank you for your patience and understanding. A couple of issues, the duration of assignment, people who are assigned to this, would there be a duration of assignment, or could they stay there as long as they're comfortable, as long as you're comfortable with them? Is there going to be any duration of assignment in those particular positions that we're putting forward?
As Mark indicated, the idea here, because of the expertise, the clearances that are required, the relationships that we certainly want them to have with their colleagues, not only here, but throughout the world, these are career path types of assignments. And speaking to the issue of the drop program, one of the problems with the people in the drop program, they're only going to be around for a couple of years after drop, that they're not going to be around for those five, 10, 15 years. Some of this is to provide structure to allow career growth within this unit. One of the frustrations we have now is people to get promoted are transferring out of the area, which is a great frustration of the department in general, we're always constantly moving people around. The idea here is to develop a degree of expertise that would allow people to keep moving up within the Bureau.
So someone, for example, assigned to the bomb squad, they get promoted, then they have to leave the bomb squad. Someone assigned to a specialized function, air support, they're a flight, tactical flight officer, whatever, will have some stability in this, so we're not going to be losing them as they promote up the ladder. They'll be able to promote up the ladder within that intelligence operation.
The idea is just that, too, particularly within this field, because of the credentials that are necessary, the expertise, that you just kind of sign somebody in there for a year or two. It's going to take them several years to build up the expertise, plus the schools we have to send them to, which are extraordinarily costly, to build up that expertise. No, this is intended to, when you look at the rank structure, the people there, to allow career opportunities within that funnel, if you will.
Okay, thank you. The other issue I have is consent decree. Any of these positions fall under the consent decree? Anything special other than we already have to comply with?
No, not anything other than the consent decree applying to all of our personnel as it relates to use of force, investigations, et cetera.
The other issue is civilian openings. Mentioned my Councilmember Smith, we have a number of civilian openings now in the department, probably hundreds. So we can't just come in and say, "We're going to civilianize all these spots, since we're having a difficult time recruiting sworn personnel," as I understand, "difficult time recruiting civilian personnel." And we've appropriated budget for both of those, but they're not coming to the front door as quickly as we wish.
As Mr. Fujioka mentioned, we've had a number of discussions on some creative ways of dealing with just that issue, similar to recruiting police officers, same thing on the civilian side of the House, trying to find qualified civilians for some of our positions. So there's a number of options that we've been exploring to ensure, now the freezes have been lifted, and we have budget authorization to get as many of those positions filled as possible. And we've been doing just that, as well as the resultant promotions that come with it also.
And I know that we currently have. Mr. Zine, your time is coming past.
If you would hold my time when the question's being answered, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, formality is, you asked to hold it, so you want us to hold it, so we'll give you an extra 62 seconds.
Thank you. Working with other elements, I know that we have LAPD officers, working with the U.S. Marshal, working with the FBI. Will this assist in that relationship that we already have with the federal agencies?
Certainly, that because it increases our capacity to deal with them. Indeed, I think there's five or six of the positions here, including several of the civilians, that are specifically authorized for the J-RIC Center when that opens, we hope, next month. It's about two months behind.
And I understand, as I run out of time, that some jurisdictions don't have a cooperative relationship with other agencies, whether it be local, state, or federal. I understand LAPD doesn't have that conflict, that we get along with our allied agencies, whether it be the fire department. In some parts of this country, the fire department, the police department are always clashing. We don't have that type of problem here, as I understand. Everybody's working together on a federal, state, local level, in a very positive cooperative relationship. Can you just emphasize that?
That's correct. That is the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Councilwoman Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, you know, I certainly agree, Chief Bratton, with what you've said in terms of how things have changed since 9/11, and the face of terrorism, and certainly our approach to combating it is new territory. It's difficult for me to sit here and listen to this discussion and, you know, read this motion and what we're proposing today, and not wonder, you know, about, speaking of getting along with other agencies, what the Counterterrorism and Criminal Intelligence Bureau Bureau's relationship with the airport police and the port police. As we know, you know, the airport certainly was the face of terrorism with nine eleven, but in my opinion, and you all know this, that I believe the most vulnerable entryway into this country is the Port of Los Angeles in Long Beach. We are still very vulnerable, we certainly are on all the lists. Every time we talk about chatter and who's targeted, the port is always, you know, on the top-ten list. So maybe you can speak to me on what it will be, the interaction, what is the relationship between what we're doing today and the airport police and the port police? For instance, are any of these positions specifically assigned to interact with both of those agencies? Hold my time.
Yes, Councilmember Hahn, I can address that. First of all, some of these positions will be counterterrorism liaison personnel. What they will be doing is interfacing with the seventeen economic sectors that we find in our community, all the way from petrochemical to transportation, entertainment, and so forth. One of those sectors naturally involves transportation in the Port of Los Angeles and at LAX. So we'll have direct interface with not only the operators of those critical infrastructure, but we will have interface with the public safety personnel that are assigned at those critical infrastructure, including the private security personnel that work at the docks and some of the shipping container companies. Furthermore, the J-RIC that the chief mentioned, that will have space available in it for people from the World Airport's Police Department and from the port police, and they certainly are invited to participate in that, and I believe that they will be sending personnel to that Joint Regional Intelligence Center. And the last piece in here that will directly impact both of those critical infrastructure is the Operation Archangel piece. This is a technology, a system, if you will, that will enable us to create a blanket of security over our most critical infrastructure. And as has been pointed out in various other conversations this morning, LAX and the Port of Los Angeles are number one and number two, and we will not forget that.
And then continue, tell me directly how George Cummings is...
George Cummings is...
Would be, would be, you know, either part of this, besides just being invited to, you know, attend meetings.
Well, in several ways.
I mean, he's the Director of Homeland Security for the Port of Los Angeles.
I know who he is, and I meet with George on a frequent basis. He will benefit from the Operation Archangel piece of this, he will benefit from the terrorism liaison officer piece of this, he will benefit from the counterintelligence liaison officer program that will be in the J-RIC, and he will get a direct feed of intelligence from that J-RIC on anything that impacts the port.
And how about vice versa?
And vice versa, that is...
I think that's what I'm getting at.
That's entirely...
I feel like, of course, the airport police and the port police are on the front lines in both of those entities, so more than them necessarily benefiting, how are you receiving that kind of, you know...
Absolutely.
Terrorism information from them?
We recognize that this is not a one-way street, that we don't have all the information. The information that's going to be critical to preventing the next terrorist attack is probably going to be developed at the street level by a street police officer.
Well, exactly. Or, let me ask you this, your Critical Infrastructure Protection Task Force, can you tell me how you're going to go about appointing civilians to that? And I certainly think, for me in the Port of Los Angeles, a civilian who's on the street ought to be a member of ILWU. I would like to see being put on that Infrastructure Task Force. I mean, that is a target that needs to be hardened, and no one is better at the eyes and ears for what could potentially be, you know, intelligence than those dock workers who work there day in and day out. So I think a member of ILWU on that task force as a civilian appointee would be beautiful. And hold my time, but tell me maybe how you're going to go about appointing those people.
Well, the Protective Security Task Force that you referenced is a platoon of personnel. We propose sworn personnel, because it will require law enforcement ability, peace officer powers.
What does that civilian, civilian positions?
Well, there will be some civilian positions there for support purposes, but...
I mean, you might just want to look at that. Again, I feel like sometimes we miss some very big connections to, you know, a possible terrorist attract at the port, and being disconnected in terms of our anti-terrorism efforts. You might want to just think of that. And one more thing, chief, I know we have been in discussions about having an Assistant Chief of Homeland Security from the Fire Department assigned to the Port of Los Angeles. This is something that I completely agree with, whether it's a terrorist attack, whether it's a tsunami, whether it's an oil refinery accident, I believe the harbor area is greatly underserved in terms of having a dedicated person from the Fire Department responding to being the point person and protecting the harbor area. And I'm wondering if this might be a good place to insert that as a possible position paid for by the Port of Los Angeles, so would not come out of the city's fund. But that's something I've been wanting for a long time, is Assistant Chief reporting to you specifically as the point person for disaster response and prevention at the harbor.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Where is that discussion? Thank you for that.
It's an appropriate time to discuss that. I have sat down with Geraldine Nats, and I'm very encouraged with her background, coming from Long Beach. We've had initial discussions about improving the security. Next Monday, I'm having lunch with Chief Ellis from Long Beach. One of the things we need to do, and that harbor is an area where you have multi-agencies, federal, state, and local, that are constantly interacting. My desire is to have a dedicated Assistant Chief interfacing with the harbor, as well as with the airport. We currently, the LAWA is paying for a captain, too, as part of their strategic security plan that they put together. As you're well aware, we have the Maritime Security Committee down in the harbor. Those are two positions that are very critical to me as we move along to focusing on those two areas as the prime targets for terrorism.
I think that would greatly go to enhance the safety and security of those around the airport and those around the port. I'd like to introduce that as a friendly amendment to this.
Good. I'll second that amendment, and thank you, Ms. Hahn. I'd like to call on Councilmember Parks now.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to ask, Mark talked to you a little earlier, could you just tie together the issue of graduating classes, attrition, and backfields, so that people get a better understanding of how that may occur?
Certainly. In the proposal before you, there are seventy-three sworn positions. We will not fill these seventy-three sworn positions immediately. Instead, what we will do is that we will, we will monitor the recruits graduating from the academy. There are currently an average of thirty-five recruits that graduate every twenty-eight days, and as those recruits graduate, we will fill incrementally the seventy-three positions included in this proposal. So what that means, in the course of about eighty-four days or three deployment periods, we will have approximately a hundred and five recruits that will have graduated from the Police Academy. And during that same period of time, and perhaps even over a longer period of time, those seventy-three positions that are in this proposal will be filled. So we're mindful of the impact that this has on the street, and we are prepared to implement this so that it minimizes, to the greatest extent possible, any impacts that there will be felt on the street.
But also the ongoing attrition, because I think that's also something that many people are equally...
There will be, actually, there will be a net gain if we stretch out the filling of these positions. There will be a net gain of about twenty-eight positions at the end of it.
So the clear point is, is that we're just not going to move seventy-three immediately, we're going to consider attrition, and we're going to consider the issue of backfields as part of the academy class.
Yes. We anticipate that it will take us ninety to a hundred and twenty days to fully implement this program.
Chief Bratton, I just would like, the one issue that I think still needs, from my mind, to be clarified is that we asked for a response to the CLA report on 1F that dealt with guidelines, ATD guidelines. And the one thing in the response, it appears to me that we have narrowly focused the guidelines pertain only to investigation conducted by ATIS, although we are creating a number of units outside of ATIS that are dealing in some form of intelligence work. And having been there when PDID exploded years ago, that was the exact concern as to creating the guidelines. And so I would just like a response as it relates to how we're going to ensure the ATD guidelines are going to be appropriately dealt with, and how these functions will fold under those guidelines.
Councilmember, I can answer that. The Police Commission guidelines pertaining to the intelligence function will not pertain to the individuals that are assigned to criminal investigations, the same as they would not apply to a robbery detective working Wilshire Division. It's a criminal investigation, the laws governing the conduct of criminal investigations would cover those personnel. The only people that would be covered by the Police Commission guidelines that are contained in this package are those that are assigned to the anti-terrorist intelligence section of major crimes, and those that are assigned to the Joint Regional Intelligence Center, that are actually dealing with intelligence.
Okay, but I think the concern I have is that, if I remember the terms, we have the infrastructure people, they're not going to be making criminal arrests, but they're going to be collecting information.
No, they will not be collecting intelligence information. They will be collecting information about critical infrastructure.
Okay, then I'm confused, because if they go out to these structures, they're not crimes occurring at that moment, they're going to be collecting material as they are, it's identified, and until a crime occurs or we think it's suspect, it's stuff that's hanging there. The other ones, I think we call them intelligence officers, that are going to be out into the community, talking to people, whatever information they gather, what do we do with that? Because it's not all about crime, it's collecting information that in some fashion could help the intelligence function, and in some facets, could end up being criminal.
Well, no, if any information that is collected in the field by our terrorism liaison officers or by our counterterrorism intelligence officers will be fed into the Joint Regional Intelligence Center, it will be vetted there. If it is, if it has a criminal nexus, then it will be disposed of by assigning to the appropriate criminal entity. Some of those resources will be at Major Crimes Division, others may be in the City of Hawthorne, it depends on where the lead is generated from. But if it is purely an intelligence information, then it will be covered by these guidelines.
Okay, no matter what source it comes from?
No matter what source it comes, if it comes into the LAPD, it will be covered by the guidelines. If it becomes our information, it will be covered by the guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. The clock is not working, and if you request to speak, please raise your hand. Mr. Rosendahl is the last on the queue. Mr. Weiss, thank you. Mr. Fujioka.
Before Councilman Rosendahl speaks, with respect to Councilwoman Hahn's motion to add two Assistant Chiefs, could we modify it somewhat and say, subject to, you know, confirmation that the port and harbor will pay for these positions?
Yes, Ms. Hahn agreed, and I seconded, so I agree.
Thank you.
And I'll be the third one to agree with that, because I would like to see LAWA's monies and also the port's monies be used in counterterrorism proposals. First, I want to congratulate you all for putting together a first-class plan, and I think it meets our needs in this moment. I'm just curious about eighty-three new personnel. Do you mean completely new people, or are these people you're going to train and shift over? Explain that.
Well, the seventy-three positions, seventy-three positions that are contained in the Police Department part of this, those are completely new authorities.
Yeah.
They don't exist now. There are people performing a lot of those functions, but those people have come from other assignments. So this will create the authorities that will enable us to fill with completely new personnel if we choose to, to perform this function.
Okay, that's if you choose to, because, I mean, frankly, we want eighty-three overall staffing patterns for new positions and seventy-three for you, but if you have good people within your mix now that you've identified, you put in there, you're just going to, you know, have those positions filled with people with expertise, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're not looking for fresh new faces for this necessarily? Okay, okay. When can we launch this, assuming we approve it today?
Hopefully, when you approve it today, it'll be approved on a forthwith basis, and we move immediately. We'll create the positions, authorize the authorities in the department's budget, and the department will, both departments will do what's necessary to get these programs going.
And just to restate what my colleague Janice Hahn said, how does this all coordinate with the separate police units at both LAX and the harbor?
They have been consulted on the development of this plan, so they know that what we're doing, how we're going to enhance our intelligence capability, how we're going to enhance our critical infrastructure protection capability, and they are fully supportive of it and plan to participate with us when it is implemented.
And obviously, homeland security in Washington is a backdrop to all of this as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Actually, for the first time, Mr. Labange, and then Mr. Weiss for a second time, unless there's anybody else for a first time. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard for a first time? Mr. Labange.
Yeah, very much, thank you, thank you all, Deputy Mayor, thank you. Chief Bratton, what I liked what you said about the street police officer usually finding it, because I always think it's, I think it was J.D. Tippett on November twenty-second, nineteen sixty-three, who went into that theater and found Oswald. And I think a street cop, when my brother got carjacked at Fourth and Main, Janice, my brother was working on a movie at Fourth and Main, and about two in the morning, he got in his car, and a guy came by and jacked him out of his car, and it was county safety police at the County of Los Angeles Hospital who pulled him over, the guys who jacked my brother's car. Why? Because the guy was driving too slow. So that influence on street cops is so important. The guy was driving too slow, and the street cops found him. Ms. Hahn, I like what she said about the port, Mr. Rosendahl said that about the port and the airport, but also we forgot the big thing. What do they forget, Commander Leap? Water and power, because there's a whole big system out there. And I know the relationships that you have to have in liaisons, I hope you have a named liaison in each of those departments that there to you, and even our park ranger system, because of Mount Lee, I think, is a Griffith Park, they hike up there and all that that goes on there. I just think this is long overdue, and I thank you, it's taken a long time, and I want to support the mayor on this and his effort here. I do believe greatly in homeland security and hometown security, and all this is going to come together, but we got to remember, as Chief Bratton said, members of council, and I say this, just like in 'oh-six, in San Francisco, and thirty-three in Tehachapi, no, no, thirty-three in Long Beach, fifty-one in Tehachapi, seventy-one in Silmar, eighty-seven in Whittier, ninety-four in Northridge, we're going to have another earthquake. And just like the tragedy of September eleventh in two thousand and one in New York, we're going to have another challenge of terrorism. And we have to be prepared, and this is the way to do it. So I just wanted to thank each and every one of you in the departments in the fields. I do support Mr. Smith's concept of thinking about civilianization and somehow in some areas to help out. So I just stand to make those comments, no questions today, but thanks for you and the men and women of your departments who work hard at this effort day and night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and Mr. Weiss, take us home.
Folks, we've worked on this, this was one of the first major projects for this mayor's office, beginning back in August. I think the meeting started on this, and I want to thank Deputy Mayor Suh and all of his staff, in particular Deputy Deputy Mayor Robison, who hates it when I mention his name, but he started working on this plan before this administration even came into being. And my staff has worked on it for years as well, LAPD, CAO, Fire. I just want to say a particular thanks to Mark Leap. I really hope that this is the last chance I have to address you as Commander Leap, and I take great... I take great pride in this final opportunity, Commander. Hope to see you soon with slightly new duds on your uniform there. I would ask that this go forthwith to the mayor, and I would just say finally that, you know, this is a very significant investment. For the first time, we will have a 21st century full-time intelligence operation in Los Angeles for this 21st century threat, and I appreciate your eye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Cardenas, want to?
Yes, Police Chief Bratton, I just want, I don't want people to get the wrong impression about what the city of Los Angeles is doing today about making sure that we're abreast of the terrorism issues that may be out there and the communication with Washington, et cetera. This is, as Councilman Weiss said, a major investment, certainly not the last effort that we're going to have in making sure that we're fortified and prepared on this issue. But today, we do have, in fact, efforts and manpower and women power and energy put into making sure that we are safe, correct? This is just taking it to the next level.
That's correct. This effectively is taking it to the next level, reflective of changing conditions that will continue to keep changing.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out, because this is a long discussion, in case somebody turned on the television and is watching this, I don't want them to think that this is the first step. This is a major step in something that since 9/11, we have been very involved. And then before 9/11, there was communication, there was efforts and communication with Washington. Obviously, after 9/11, it is a different world, and we have been addressing that. I just want to make sure that the public doesn't get the impression that until you start rolling this phase out, that we haven't been doing anything, and we have. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, we do have amendment.
We think we're going to have this.
Yes, Ms. Clerk.
I'm sorry. The amending motion was to add two Assistant Chief positions, and that would be subject to confirmation that the harbor and the Lawa, we're going to pay for those. Assistant Chiefs.
Again, friendly amendment is accepted by everybody. If there's no objection, that is a friendly amendment. Okay?
And there are two items before council, item number one and item number two. Item number two has two committee reports, and they do not compete. They do concur with each other.
Okay, why don't we move both of those, then? And why don't we take an oral vote on this? Since I think we have, let's take them together, please, if we can take an oral vote, please.
Cardenas, Grohl, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti.
Aye.
That's 12 ayes.
Okay, that is approved, and we will send that forthwith. Thank you all very much, gentlemen.
And that concludes the special meeting.
Okay, if we can go back to the regular meeting and take up item 31 now. We have speaker card from Sylvia Lynn Hawkins on item 31. Ms. Hawkins, if you'd like to come forward.
My name is Sylvia Hawkins. As a Class B license, unified, trained it for six months with Los Angeles Unified School Bus Driver. As we United States of America workers have worked it so hard together to organize legalization, let's keep focus on all kids' schools ID passes to make sure that these are legal passes so that they can receive jobs and other events tickets for being legal. Now, at all universities, 25% of all university four-year terms colleges have been faking to receive jobs for Class B license for AMLM drivers, truck drivers, police drivers, firemen drivers, whether private or not, without passing the Class B license test, which is higher than Class C license test. I am very interested that as we continue to organize license and permits, driver's license, ID passes, that is redone in order with tests and with driving tests that is higher than Class C license to qualify for these high job positions. Thank you very much. My name is Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. On your thoughts on removing the property at 2280 West 24th Street from Renescro Account Program. We appreciate your testimony. Anybody wishing to be heard on this? If not, second oral vote on this.
Cardenas, Grohl, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti.
Aye.
And that's 12 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item.
Mr. President, I believe there's a request to reconsider item number 12 that was adopted earlier.
Okay. Colleagues, are there any objection to reconsidering 12? Not second oral vote on reconsideration, please.
Cardenas, Grohl, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti.
Okay, that item is now before us. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Simply, the motion was not before the councilmembers when the vote was taken, so we'd just like to reconsider it so we could take the appropriate vote.
And that's been circulated now?
Yes.
Okay, if you'd like to move that, I will second that, and we can open the roll on substitute motion.
Cardenas, Grohl, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, that is approved.
Mr. President, can we also send item number 10 forthwith, please?
Sure, 10 forthwith, we will send right away. Next items?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Excuses on the desk. Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused Wednesday, April 12th to leave at noon. And that's city business, that meets council policy.
He is excused.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Friday, May 12th to leave at 11:00 a.m. for personal business and Friday, May 19th for city business. Those both meet council policy.
Okay, then he is excused as well.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, announcements? Do we have any announcements? Not, do we have any adjourning motion? Oh, sorry, Mr. Labange has an announcement. Mr. Labange.
So I know it was yesterday, but I wanted to make it there. Yesterday was the filing for county tax, property tax, to make sure everybody pays their property tax, and thanks all those who did. I did talk to someone who lived in Massachusetts who paid $22,000 for a home and property tax, which amazed me, as I paid my $4,400 in property tax. So, anyway, property tax, we thank the county for sending over our fair share. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine, announcement, adjourning motion? Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, can I please ask everybody to rise in council chambers for adjourning motions? Mr. Wesson, did you have an announcement? I'm sorry?
The adjournment.
Okay, the adjournment, okay. Anybody on this side for adjourning motions? Okay, starting with Mr. Labange.
Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Paul Hillga, who was the Los Angeles County Chief probation officer for the last 30 years. He oversaw the 5200-member agency for the County of Los Angeles. He had an untimely passing, survived by his wife Jane and two children, Josh and Jennifer. Also, members, I ask to be adjourned in memory of Gene Pitney, a very successful songwriter in the early '50s and '60s, teen idol, and was very famous now and traveled in Europe. He passed at a concert. His most famous classic song was Liberty Balance or Town Without a Pity. Gene Pitney, I ask to be adjourned in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Wesson?
Yes, it's with, Mr. President, thank you, it's with great sadness that I rise today to adjourn in memory of a great Los Angelino, Dr. Samuel J. Hill, who was a dentist. He was 80 years old, born in North Carolina, the ninth of 10 children, received his degree from the North Carolina Central University in 1945. He served in the Air Force from 1942 until 1952. He received his degree from the Harry Medical School in 1958, and he opened his first office in Los Angeles in 1959. He was an active member of Holman Methodist Church. He was active in the community. He was a vice president of the USC Watts Multipurpose Health Clinic, had a very, I believe, strong relationship with Janet, your father, Supervisor Han. There are a lot of people who are elected that can say that he was partly responsible for it, and a lot of people who were elected in the past. He is survived by his great family, probably the best thing that he's leaving here in Los Angeles, his great family, his wife Rosa, 55 years, and his children, my dear personal friend Joey Hill, his daughter Sandra Carlton and Charles. They will miss him dearly.
Second for Ms. Han. Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Zine.
Request to adjourn in memory of a man that I knew and used to take on ride-alongs with the LAPD, Salvador Montenegro, passed away April 4th. Salvador Montenegro was 82 years of age, former Los Angeles Police Commissioner, died at his home in South San Gabriel. Sal was born in Anaheim on June 16th, 1923, was the sixth of eight children born to Beatrice and Juan Montenegro, migrant worker who picked crops in California's farming communities of Delano and Watsonville and lived in Mexico. Enlisted in the United States Navy, served in the South Pacific during World War II. He was a real estate agent and appraiser, and in 1973, then Mayor Tom Bradley appointed him to the Police Commission, a move designed to improve relations between the Los Angeles Police Department and the Latino community. Sal Montenegro resigned in 1980, and his departure was lamented by former chief Darryl Gates, who said, "Montenegro had an open mind and had done so, much to alleviate festering problems in the Latino community." In 1983, then-President Ronald Reagan named Salvador Montenegro Director of the Selective Service System in California, a post that involved overseeing the state's 187 draft boards and working to ensure that young men of the draft age register. Along with his work in real estate and on the Police Commission, he was active in the Latino Peace Office Association, civic organizations, including Rotary International and the Council of Mexican-American Affairs and the American GI Forum. Montenegro will be greatly missed by all, its family and friends, survived by his wife Rachel, two brothers, David and Jose, brother-in-law Elias Hernandez, four sisters-in-laws, Ala, Consuelo, Mildred, and Zita Montenegro. I remember him from his days as a police commissioner, when he would ride with me in Hollywood, and he was a police commissioner who really supported the men and women of the LAPD. And people did not know his compassion for police officers and the bridges that he built with the Latino community. We would go on patrol calls, and he would show support for the officers on those patrol calls. And I'd run into him here and there, always a friendly smile, and he was one police commissioner that made a lot of changes, a lot of positive changes in the relationship between the LAPD officers and Latino community. Salvador Montenegro, may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. All members?
Very nicely done, Mr. Zine, on that, to remember him.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Labange?
From Mr. Padilla, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Cynthia Gale Wong. She was born in May 5th, 1959, just passed away here on February 40th, 2006. She was an English teacher for Willowood Elementary School in West Covina, librarian at Roosevelt Middle School, and then ended up her career as a librarian at the Pacoima Middle School. She served as treasurer secretary for the California School Librarians Association. Cynthia was an active force in reading and information literacy. She played a key role in implementing the state's curriculum standard. She will be missed by all. She was loved by many, and she inspired all. I ask that we adjourn on behalf of Mr. Padilla, Cynthia Gale Wong.
Thank you very much. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, colleagues. Our next meeting will be tomorrow. It's Wednesday, April 12th at 10:00 a.m. We invite folks to come down or testify for Van Nuys, and the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council will be adjourned until then. Thank you.